Good morning, everyone. Call to order, this work session of the Grant County Board of Commissioners, January 22, 2019. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and the New Mexico State Flight Salute.
(Pledge of Allegiance) of the United States of America. Into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with thy standest as strong. I salute the pride of the state of New Mexico as a symbol of perfect friendship among our allies.
Is there a motion to approve the work session agenda?
No. Second?
On the favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. The general purpose of the county work session is to inform the Grant County Board of Commissioners of the agenda items that will be addressed at the next regular meeting, which in this case will be on Thursday, 9 o'clock a.m., and for department heads and other elected officials to communicate with the commissioners in regards to matters in their respective departments. In accordance with Grant County Resolution R-1901, we welcome the public to attend the work session, however, there's no public input permitted at this meeting. Agenda item Roman numeral five, HeLa Regional Medical Center report. We have with us Taffy Arias this morning and Richard Stokes. Good morning.
Good morning. How is everyone? And welcome to our new commissioners. Thank you so much for letting us speak before you today. We have a few things. You know, we apologize if you did not get our financial report ahead of time. We have not even presented it to our board members yet, but Richard will give you a synopsis of what that's going to look like. But just to start off with a few things, you know, primarily, one of the things that I really need to do as a CEO is to recruit physicians to this area. So what we've been doing lately is that we have recruited Dr. Clarence Rollser, who will be as a surgeon, and he will be starting May 10. We have two additional surgeon interviews this week, one today and one on Thursday. The candidate that is today will finish her residency, her second residency, in July. So she would be joining us if she accepted the offer in July. And then we have another gentleman coming from the Las Cruces area for an interview on Thursday. And Han is why we're very anxious to move to Silver City. We have also hired two nurse practitioners, and they are orienting right now at G R M C, a family practice clinic, and they will be part of our expansion, which was delivered to you in our April strategic plan. Dr. Owassa, who is our podiatrist, his volume is growing. He has several presentations for the community being scheduled right now, and we're most anxious to get him out into the public so everyone can meet and greet him. One of the programs that we are developing right now, and it's really exploding, is our occupational physical therapy and rehab, which you know is in our wellness center. Our volumes have been growing really steadily. We hired a new director for that program late September of this year. His name is Frank Grammer. And there are several programs that he has developed, and they're very new programs. One is women's health slash pelvic floor. This is a new program. And just to let you know, in September, the revenue from this program, because it had just started, was 1,500, and in December was 7,000. And so it is even more in January. We hired a new specialist for this program, and she has really started marketing women's health. The second program that we're really developing is Lanthodemia. And this is not a brand-new program. It was actually in January of last year, we had this program, but it wasn't to the extent that we have it right now. So in January of 2018, the revenue for this program was $5,780, and of December, it was 21,000. So that, and the majority of that was since our new director started, because he specializes in this program. The last thing, or one of the last things I want to share with you, I have three other things. Last time I shared with you that we have started working with a company to recruit nurses from the Philippines. This is very important to us, because their hospitals mirror our hospitals, their nursing programs mirror our nursing programs. And so I think we have eight starting from the Philippines. They're going to be trickling in, starting in February. One of the crucial things for these nurses is housing, because they really need housing when they come here. So some of those, the company that arranges everything for them will be looking for housing for these nursing in our community. We also have started our next internship program, and we have nine nurses starting in that program, as you know. This is a program for new nurses starting, and we give them a just amount of time to go through a group ruling orientation program. So when they do start taking care of patients on their own, they're much better prepared than just coming out of school. The next thing I wanted to share with you is, you know, we have been, and I know you have been saying a lot in the newspaper about the issues with the immigrants coming over the border and being processed through different processing stations throughout Texas and New Mexico, one of those being in Northburg. I was scheduled to do a site interview, a site visit with them last week, when we were notified that we were going to get 65 patients that we were bringing in. So that had to be rescheduled. However, I want to share with you that, number one, we did not get 65 all at once, and we did not get 65 at all. We got probably about 40 total, but they trickled them. It was very well managed, it was very well organized, and the Border Patrol did give us a heads up before bringing these patients in. One of the things I want to share with you is the relationship that we have developed with the Border Patrol. I can tell you that those agents have been nothing short of the most professional people that we have ever worked with. And the patients coming in are so grateful for the care that they are receiving. We are seeing families come in. Primarily, we're treating children, and we're seeing a various amount of diagnoses, anywhere from respiratory to GI and dehydration, which you can well imagine, crossing that length of space without proper water and food. So we have had a wonderful relationship with the other hospitals, not only in New Mexico, but in Texas, Arizona, accepting these patients when it is at a higher acuity level than we're prepared to accept. So that's been working very well. I did want to share with you that yesterday, we had a regional meeting with various hospitals in New Mexico. We hosted this, we asked for this, and we organized this meeting. It was hospitals and healthcare organization in New Mexico, in our area, and other areas also in El Paso, sending up agencies to talk about how we are addressing this great concern. It was such a powerful meeting. There were about 26 people that attended the meeting. It was in our EMS building. And not only that, but we had people who could not travel, connecting by telephone. But it was the most powerful meeting, and we have other meetings set up with work groups who are going to be sharing data, and sharing processes, and sharing experiences, so we can better care for these patients. So I wanted to share that with you. The last thing I want to share with you is something that's very, very important to our organization, and this is how we are changing our culture at our hospital. We have been working on this for about a year and a half, how we change the process in our hospital on greeting our patients and taking care of patients. It is not good enough to say you deal with patients as if they are your true priority. It is not good enough to say that you treat every patient with compassion and dignity and respect. The only thing that is good enough is your behavior, and what the proof is in that pudding. And so we are making sure that every patient is processed and cared for in the best of and most respectful and compassionate manners. And this is something that happens in the very beginning, when somebody calls our hospital to ask for guidance, to ask for help, to ask for direction. We have been most fortunate to hire someone in patient access that is making sure that his staff is doing just this. And we are very pleased with this process, because people must be held accountable for their actions and their behaviors, and this is what we are doing. In changing the culture, there are some feathers that have been ruffled by people that we have said, "You cannot work at HeLa Regional, because you do not possess these qualities. You do not possess this in your heart. You do not possess this in your mindset. Therefore, no matter what your background, no matter what your skill level, if you don't possess these qualities, you are not fit to work in our organization." And so I want to tell you that, that you can have very, very strong, qualified people, but if they don't have those attributes, they do not belong in healthcare. We can teach people how to do many technical things. We can teach them how to insert tubes, how to insert IVs, how to possess the most advanced of technology. But what we cannot teach is compassion. That we cannot teach. So this is what we hire. And that is something that I want you to know, that is our obligation to this community. So do I have any questions from you?
Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
Um, unclear what happens in the cases that you mentioned of children brought to the hospital by customs inspection. If they are unaccompanied, which I understand happens sometimes, presumably, they have, somebody has to make medical decisions for them. How does that work?
Well, they are under the, you know, they are brought in here by Border Patrol. They are in the custody of Border Patrol. They are bringing us these patients to screen and treat. So they do make those decisions. I have not encountered anyone that came in just by themselves. Usually, it's in a group of a family when they come in, either a father and children, mother and children. And so that has not been an issue for us. The most important thing to recognize on this is that all of these patients have rights. Children are subset of this, and that if they have been put in some type of situation that is a danger. It is, it is under the guidance of Border Patrol when they bring them in, to make sure that these patients are cared for appropriately. Every time they come in, there has to be one Border Patrol agent with an eyesight of these patients, whether it's in a family or one patient. When they are admitted to our hospital, a Border Patrol agent stays with them the entire time. And they do not stay in the room, they stay outside the room, but it's only because they are under, you know, they are under terror from the moment they come into the border of Border Patrol. That is their responsibility. When they bring them into the hospital, not only do they have rights under being a patient in the hospital, which are numerous rights, but they also have rights under protection of the Border Patrol. And so when they come in, they're like any other patient. The pediatric patient is treated no differently, because they are under the control at that point of a Border Patrol agent.
So from our hospital's perspective, the Border Patrol agent gets to make decisions that in other cases would be made by a parent? Is that right?
Well, really, we're making those decisions, the healthcare decisions.
Okay.
And we are letting them know what the patient needs.
You're letting the Border Patrol know that?
Yes.
Right. So you say you haven't had a case that you have of a minor without a parent?
I am not aware of it. I don't know that that has not happened, but I'm aware of it.
I'm aware of at least one case. And I, so I don't know, apparently, it's not very numerous. And I guess that case is what prompted my question, because I just don't know, I don't know how it would work, with somebody who doesn't have, you know, a parent to represent them.
Right.
How did they, how would that person get aware of their rights?
Well, if it's a, if it's an adult.
If it's a child, let's say.
If it's a child?
Yeah.
I don't know that.
Yeah, okay. You leave that up to the Border Patrol, is that?
Yes, yes.
Is that the hospital's policy?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But we do protect those rights, all the patients in our hospital, all of their rights.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Can we share yours?
Thanks for the presentation. So I'm totally, you know, I appreciate that the hospital's take care of these patients, and, you know, respecting their rights and all that stuff, very important. But there's also a practical matter. How are you being reimbursed for the expense of their care?
Well, I'll let Richard go into that a little deeper, but when we met with Border Patrol agents that I told you about earlier, several months ago, we clarified this with them, because we wanted to make sure that we were getting reimbursed also. And they bring in an identifier, which is for that patient, and it's a piece of paper that we send in for reimbursement, for billing purposes. So they do reimburse us for the care.
So, excuse me. So do you know, where are you sending that document?
I'll let it, Richard, you want to answer that?
Yeah.
Because I really don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I'm not 100% sure of the exact physical address that we sent it to, but I want to know the, I want to know the Department of the. It goes, we, the Border Patrol has no funding for medical services, so our bills actually go and fall underneath ICSS budget. And so we send it to the governmental agency that pays it, and that's the budget where the funds come from.
So ICSS is paying the medical expenses?
Correct.
And obviously, you're probably not getting reimbursed at the moment. Had you been getting reimbursed at the same time?
Yes, we get reimbursed at the Medicare rate.
Okay, and it's coming in a timely manner?
Yes, we, I have not been made aware of any issues.
Okay. It's only partial, and some of the departments are funded through the end of the fiscal year. Okay.
I do want to comment real quick, though, that we, when we first got involved or were notified that there was going to be increased activity at the hospital from the Border Patrol, you know, Ms. Taffy called and requested a meeting with the Border Patrol, which she alluded to just a few seconds ago. That meeting was very, very informative for us and for the Border Patrol, because we needed to, we needed to understand the rules, how they operate. More importantly to us, they needed to understand, when they bring patients into hospital, these are our rules. And it was a very good meeting, and we've had no issue, no problems working with Border Patrol, because we explained everything upfront. And I think that was a, I think if we had not done that, we would have had some more problems. So I was really glad that Ms. Taffy scheduled that meeting. Okay, I'll just move on. Yes, sir?
Please.
I have a question as to the hiring practices. You said you screened for the person-to-person qualities of somebody. Now, is that only for new hires? Or do you do that for existing hires? And what kind of criteria do you use, or do you use a specific tool to assess that?
Well, let me start with new hires. With new hires, there is a screening process. There is, there is a set of questions that everyone is asked, and everyone is asked the same questions, and this is to keep everything equal. And it's how people respond to those evidence-based questions that gives us an inkling of how they, how they handle situations and how they perceive their role in the hospital. It also alludes to the fact of how they handle difficult situations. And sometimes, from those questions and those answers, still other questions, which lead us to have a greater understanding of if they will be a good fit for our organization or not. Now, when we talk about existing employees, we do have policies and procedures regarding behaviors and professional behaviors, as well as as any other organization. We have discrimination policies, we have all type of policies that say, "This is how we behave to other people," whether that is how we behave with patients, their family members, people of different sexual origins, different people from different parts of the countries, states, nationalities, and coworkers. So we have, in the past, not done a very good job in holding people accountable for poor behaviors. And as you know, poor behaviors can be many, many things. It can be how we act, how we talk, how we treat other people. It can be in body language. It can be what we say. But we have not done a good job of this in the years gone, and that has caused people to feel in the workplace less significant, less important than other people. But now that we have started holding people accountable for their behaviors in the workforce, we have a tighter, a tighter function, a tighter avenue of functionality as to what's acceptable and what is not acceptable. Did I answer the question, sir?
Yes. The only thing that I wanted to know is, on something existing, are those policies vertical? They can go up and down?
Oh, absolutely, sir. For myself, throughout the organization, I am held equally accountable for mine, probably more accountable, because it starts with me. So if I am the role model, I am the one that sets a standard.
Okay.
Okay, sir. Okay, thank you, Richard.
As we spoke earlier, we have not presented the December financial information to our board, so I'm just going to give you some highlights today, and then give you an update on one of our payer contracts. So for the month of December, we ended the month at $160,387 in the red. That brings our year-to-date loss to $279,000. Now, if you compare the $279 for year-to-date for December, compared to December last year, we're at $4 million under order last year. So we, you know, I think we've made a little improvements. EBITDA, so for the month, we had $80,565 positive EBITDA, which is earnings before interest, depreciation, and amortization. So it's really, again, for the new members, that's a very, very, very close approximation to cash flow within the organization. Year-to-date-wise, we have $1.136 million positive EBITDA versus a negative $2.3 billion last year. So we are spending off cash more at the hospital today than we were a year ago. I do want to let you know that we moved our fixed asset module to live this month. You may, you may or may not be aware, that was an audit recommendation. So we did get that going, and that accounted for some prior month, just through the financial statements, as we, as we actually trued it up to the actual depreciation per month. And then I want to talk a little bit about our payer contract with Western Sky, which is the new Medicaid managed care program in New Mexico. So we have, we have been back and forth with that, with that particular company on contract language. We have not been able to come to agreement on a contract. So I believe we're meeting with some of their people in Santa Fe next week to talk about some of the, some of the differences, but, you know, we have two managed care programs in Silver City already, Blue Cross and who's a really good and fast payer, well, good, good meaning they pay 100% of the Medicaid fee schedule. We have gotten Western to move to that. So we also have Presbyterian. So it's two managed care programs already in the area, so I would encourage people to look at those very, very hard before they select their, the group they decide to go with. So, you know, that's kind, you know, it's not just the right, the rights are easy. That's the easiest part of a contract. It's the devil's in the words, and we have to get the words right. And so here's the thing that really just, I have a lot of problem with, is Western Sky has a set of criteria to do something to a patient. Blue Cross has a set of criteria we have to comply with to get paid for patients. Presbyterian has a, another set of criteria that we have to comply with in order to get paid. And so I've got, what they're really wanting us to do is have three sets of criteria that we have to manage in order to get paid. And why, why, when they moved the Centennial to, they didn't make those common among all the different managed care programs? I can't answer that, because I wasn't involved in that. But, you know, so I'm trying to get Western Sky closer to what we're already doing with Blue Cross and Presbyterian. And that's really the holdup. I wanted some language in there. For instance, they say, "If I don't send them a bill in 60 days, they're not willing to pay me." But they also say that they can retroactive recruit funds from us for three years. And, you know, where's the logic there? And so once they recoup it, if it's a technical recruitment, if I'm past 90 days, I can't bill them again. So it is, it, there's a lot, the language is what's so difficult in these contracts. So that's what we're working on. So any questions?
Okay, think about this for a second. So, um, so we have Western Sky, so New Mexico is, or, Western Sky is an MCO in New Mexico, which has Molina and United Healthcare, all of our MCOs in New Mexico, correct?
Correct.
So how many people who were with United Healthcare or Molina transferred to Western Sky as opposed to Blue Cross or Presbyterian? So I'm trying to get at, you know, if you're not able to reach an agreement with Western Sky, how is that going to impact Grant County?
So the Alda Molina patients were transferred to Presbyterian's network. Not real sure about United, I think that may have occurred a while back. But I do know Presbyterian picked up Alda Molina. So, you know, so let's say somebody did select Western Sky, and they, they came to our emergency room. The law requires that they pay us when they come to our emergency room, so that's not a problem.
But Western Sky pays?
Western Sky, yes. They're required to pay for emergency room services. If they come in for any outpatient services or inpatient services, Western Sky is required to pay us at out-of-network benefits, which is 95% of the Medicaid fee schedule. So, really, what a lot of hospitals, especially in Texas, has found is they'll take the out-of-network benefit because I don't have to comply with all the pre-admission criteria that they set forth. And so, it's not that they can't get services at Gila Regional, but we do not have a formal contract. But we are seeing patients today out of contract and will take the 95%.
At some level, you could almost say that it's a wash if it's costing you a lot to comply with all their pre-qualification costs. It may fall somewhere within that 5%.
Yeah. I would say, and I haven't looked at this specifically, but experience has taught me that the majority of our denials come through managed care, whether it's Medicare or Medicaid programs, because they're all different. And so, the opportunity for errors to creep into the claim or the process of the claim is really high. And we have put steps in place to help mitigate that. And we'll be taking another big step forward in the next six months to help us make sure we are in compliance. However, you know, this is where we are today.
So, one more question in this. So, we were at-- I think all of us were up in Santa Fe last week before the New Mexico County Conference and actually heard quite a bit about Western Sky and, you know, some of these changes, Molina, United, all this sort of stuff. And so, and the Centennial 2.0 changes. So, my question is sort of two-part. First is, does the hospital have any role in-- or anyone on staff whose role it is to talk to legislators about the fact that some of the changes in Centennial 2.0 don't make sense, like what you're saying, is the criteria not being similar over the three? And part B of that question is, can we as commissioners help with that?
Well, to answer the first question, we don't have anyone specifically designated to interact with legislators concerning this particular issue. We do engage with the Hospital Association on this matter. In fact, all of the language additions that I attempted to get inserted into the Western Sky contract, they were 100% recommendation from the Hospital Association. You know, as far as this body attempting to help in this matter, I'm not really sure.
Well, I think maybe you answered that question by saying that you're the person that-- or the body that assists you in this matter is the Hospital Association. So, I assume that they are representing you as a lobbyist as opposed to the Western Sky.
And I have spoken to the lobbyists for the Hospital Association about this very issue. They are aware, well aware of it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions? On the bottom line for the hospital, you know, it looks really good. I just want to know, is this the effect of an influx of one-time money? Or is it the effect of recurring revenues where this is going to become the norm?
Well, whether it becomes the norm or not is hard to predict because there's things that happen outside of our control that impacts that mainly in Washington and at the state in Santa Fe. However, having said that, all things remaining equal, this improvement, you can directly tie it to initiatives that we have initiated at the hospital over the last year. We are much better at getting our charges captured. We're much better at getting our bills out the door. And we're much better at collecting. Now, having said that, you know, it all goes back-- you know, the hospital is no different than any community. So, I've been at the hospital slightly over 11 months now. So, there was a culture, and there is a culture at the hospital. So, you know, when we come in and we say, these are the things we need to do, and this is why. And we give our staff an opportunity to step up. And then, and as Ms. Taffey said, you know, there's escalation through the existing personnel policies to address that. But having said that, you know, at the end of the day, it's up to the person to understand that what we're asking, one, is not unreasonable. And, two, you know, it's what our patients expect of us. It's what our neighbors expect when they walk in our hospital. And when I was meeting with our patient access staff, I just gave them a perfect example. If you walk into Chick-fil-A, you know, they welcome you. They thank you for ordering, for coming in, getting a chicken sandwich. And they make you feel like, I'm really glad I stopped by Chick-fil-A because I like it. But they make me like being there. It is all how the interaction occurs. You know, the chicken sandwich is a chicken sandwich. You know, so we're trying to say to our staff, you've at least got to do that. You've got to make people feel like they're-- that we are appreciative that they've chosen GRNC. And we do that by personal interaction. And as Ms. Taffey said, you could be completely competent, the best in the field technically. But if you interact with a patient in such a way, and this has happened here and in other hospitals I've been at, they don't want to come back, and I don't blame them. So, that's what we're trying to get to. You know, we have a lot of resistance, which is normal. Every hospital I've been to, as we attempt to modify the culture, which by the way is a seven-year project, you know, it initially meets with tremendous resistance. And so, we have-- so normally, when you initiate a change, 20% of the people will believe you and accept it. 80% will test you. 20%, about 80%, will just flat-out work against you. And it's no different at Gila, Gila Regional. But that's where leadership comes in. We have to set a course, and we have to consistently walk that walk. And that's where we're at today.
But I think what I was really truly asking was, it's looking so good, but was that because of one-time money? Or something that's going to be returning that will keep you looking good? You know, does the hospital get any influx of money that they're not going to get next year?
No, it is-- this is a normal operation. We did get some uncompensated care funds, but we've always got that. We anticipate continuing that at least through the next 24 months. So, this all goes to how well we're running the revenue cycle.
Okay.
Just to follow up on Commissioner Sylas's questions, the hospital doesn't use accelerated depreciation, right? Because we have no tax burden to worry about.
In fact, we adhere to the AHA, American Hospital Association, depreciation guidelines for our assets.
And does that mean therefore in general the amount we could appreciate is reasonably decent estimate of replacement cost, equipment and ground, real estate replacement cost? I meant physical point of cost?
Well, like, when I buy a piece of equipment, let's say an ultrasound machine, that's appreciated over five years. So, you know, there's going to be some change in that cost over the five years, but generally, it's a close approximation.
Now, I guess that the Association will mention that puts out these guidelines. They have no interest in having you accelerate, having you depreciate faster than replacing.
No. In fact, it's an industry-recognized standard. In fact, we're audited against that guide.
Right. So, and I ask those questions because the facts, you gave us the cash flow, settlement. Obviously, the improvement is extremely welcome. But the bottom line is still a limit, $250,000 year-to-date. And so, I caution us not to get overly excited about that. We're still losing money when we take into account the needs to replace equipment into fix your facility and things like that. We haven't gotten even to zero yet, much less to a place where we can build up reserves to make the large investments that are needed to bring the facility up to state-of-the-art. So, you could correct me if I'm wrong. I certainly don't mean to ruin on the good news, which is the improvement. But we're nowhere near, I don't believe, you know, having $9 million built up to invest.
And let me just reverse that. We do like to celebrate when we can celebrate. However, we are not at one moment taking our eye off this law. We know what our obligations are. We know that we are far from finished. Every day, we're looking for more opportunities. Every day, we are working on issues. Every day, we are strategizing and looking at our strategy to say, does this still make sense in a healthcare environment that we're in right now? So, this is not-- we are not where we want to be at all. But we're glad that we're here today instead of where we were last year. I want to tell you, these have been excellent comments and questions that you raised today. And I appreciate that so very much. Thank you for this opportunity.
So, Mr. Chair, before I go away, I just have one more thing I'd like to say. I just like to know for the record that I do appreciate, you know, culture of an organization and how much it takes to change cultures and stuff like that. But I want to just note that in the two-plus years that we have all been involved in turning around a hospital, that I have never heard a complaint about the people who work at the hospital. And in fact, in general, that was the thing that I heard over and over and over and over again from people is that we have great people at our hospital and that that is not what is wrong with the hospital. I just want to make note of that because I think it's important to just acknowledge that it's not just us in this room that have been struggling with what's happening there, but all of the staff. So, thank you very much.
And we do know that, Commissioner Edwards, and we do appreciate that comment. There's a lot that happens that people never know about. They never know about it. It is true that what is there right now are some extremely caring people and very good people, very progressive people now, people who are looking for better ways of doing things. But there was a subculture a year ago that was very detrimental to our organization.
I understand.
But to the public, that is not what they saw. But when it's your business, you know the subtleties and the undercurrent that happens. And I'm sure you face the same things in your careers. So, that's why the public has never questioned the quality and the compassion of our staff. That is true. And it is up to leadership to make sure that that is always the perception that they are receiving. And thank you. Thank you so much.
I agree with Commissioner Edwards. But talking about, you know, culture change, what strategies do you have in place for your leadership to provide those tools for the staff to make sure that they go in the right direction? Are you providing them training to be able to accomplish those goals?
Yes, we are. Number one, we have a culture of safety in our organization, which we have extensive training and accountability for every member of our leadership team to make sure that they are also sharing that and holding their staff accountable for the same thing. We are working on leadership classes for our staff. We know that they have been given leadership classes before. But times have changed, staff has changed. And so, we are rejuvenized. We really want to upgrade that to our current situation. So, yes, we are looking at that. Thank you for asking. Yes, sir.
I have one more question. So, also what I understand is you want people that need services to go to our hospital here.
Yes.
So, if they need whatever, instead of going to Tucson or Las Cruces or anything, they come here. But the one thing that I've heard over and over is the high cost of some of the services at the hospital. That's why people are going, you know, for blood work, for MRIs, for stuff of that nature because those services are so high at the hospital. So, there's a loss there. They're going somewhere else for those services.
Yes, sir. And generally, you know, we compare our charges to the hospitals in Las Cruces because that's typically where people go. And for the vast majority of cases, you know, we're lower than those hospitals. And that'll become evident soon, very soon, when we post our pricing transparency on our internet. Having said that, you know, there's a freestanding radiology center in Las Cruces. No hospital can compete against a nine-to-five operation where our cost is 24/7. You know, that's not only true here. It's true in every community. So, you know, while we are higher than the standalone MRI center increases, you know, oftentimes, and this is just my experience, I'm not talking about here, but my experience has shown me that typically those centers have less than modern equipment. And so, the studies aren't as good as what we provide at the hospital. And to a patient, an MRI is an MRI. But that is-- technically, that's not correct. And so, we have very modern equipment at our hospital. So, I know it doesn't help much, but our patient financial services or working with people, when they get bills that, you know, they struggle paying, you know, we work with people every day to come to some mutually agreeable resolution to that account. Now, so that's your question.
Yes, but the struggle that I have is, some of them need blood work, and they go to clinic X, and they charge them $100. You don't get the business, so you missed out on $100. Your equipment is still there, the people are still there, but you're making zero versus at least something. If MRIs-- if somebody is willing to travel to Las Cruces for an MRI, if we had something more in the ballpark, you would get something versus nothing.
Yes, sir.
So, you would be making something.
So, I agree with you 100%. And I'm not arguing with you. I know what you're talking about, you know. But I-- so I'm going to switch just a little bit and try to end this on a good note, a really good note. So, we were looking at our pharmacy charges that we charge at the hospital, whether it's oncology or just, you know, an inpatient stay. So, we looked at what we're charging. And I'm glad to say that today, today, our pharmacy charges are one-half of what they were three months ago. That was over $1 million in gross revenue that we don't have. So, now when we compare budget to actual, it's going to be perpetually off because-- so, but having said that, so I lowered-- we lowered the pricing. And I know we've talked to this group about how we've implemented the charging methodology within the Meditech system. So, we have gone back and we've looked at what we've got reimbursed versus what we charge. We have seen no reduction in reimbursement, but we're charging the patient half of what we were charging them before. And so, that's a win. Now, we haven't moved to radiology and a lot of the other areas of the hospital yet, but we will visit those. And where it's appropriate to modify those charges, we will do so.
So going back to the, the difference between the nine-to-five standalone and a hospital that's, you know, over 24/7, I totally recognize that. Makes complete sense to me. My question is, there are entities in this community that are nine-to-five healthcare providers. And I, I would like to think that there is a way for us to keep the kinds of people that Commissioner Solis is talking about, that we're all talking about, in our community, some of the money stays in our community. And so I'd like to know if you're exploring partnerships with those other entities to provide some of these services that people are going to Las Cruces to get, and if not, do you plan to?
Well, I haven't actually started any conversation because there's so much what I consider basic work that needs to be done at the hospital still. And I mean, we, and I've told you all this before, we've got another, we've got another hard year ahead of us to, just to get the basics in line. But to your question, no, we have, I haven't explored those options, although we have. And I will tell you that internally, as we, as we talk about operations and potential new projects, we inevitably during the conversation, we talk about who in the community can we partner with. So it's, it's in our mindset. To date, we really haven't moved forward to a great extent on that. But it is getting into the conversation now.
Well, and I, I do understand that, you know, there's basic work to be done, but we also, I think, you know, one of the really important things that we have to do as a community is keep as much of our money in our own community as we possibly can.
Yes, sir. So, you know, I'm a big believer, and when I was talking to the chamber two months ago, you know, we were talking about, we put up the quality ratings of the hospitals in Cruces and Deming versus ours. And then, so we talked about, you know, when you leave Silver City to go to one of those hospitals for something that could be done here, you're actually going to a lower-quality hospital. Having said that, I talked about, you know, when, when people elect to drive to Cruces, you know, they are making the economy of Cruces stronger because dollars are flowing there versus in, in Silver City. So your point is well taken. Every time that decision is made, it makes us weaker and them stronger. So I, I hear you.
Further questions? Thank you. Thank you for your time today and thanks for answering all those questions.
This was fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda six, review the January 24 regular meeting agenda.
Down to him.
Oh, I thought we already heard someone. Sorry, Dan. I talked to him this morning. Dan LoTera, HMS.
Thank you. And good morning, commissioners, county manager, administrative, county administrative staff and community. So thank you for the opportunity to come and provide a few updates. It's really interesting to, to listen to the challenges in healthcare, and I think, you know, obviously, we all face them. And maybe some of, some of these topics will come up again. First and foremost, I want to give you an update on Tucasa. As you know, we did a soft start and we opened October 15th. And wanted to give some numbers through December 31st, we serve, we provided 579 service encounters in that timeframe. We are wrapping up our precious triage center application to be submitted to the state department of health for licensing so we can do an aggressive ramp-up of staff to go 24/7 as initially planned. Again, as a reminder, we had to wait to the rules to get promulgated and approved at the state level before we could even get the, before we could submit our letter of intent and then follow that up with our application. So Ms. Amanda Frost, who's doing an amazing job, has got that application ready for me to sign on Friday and get submitted. In regards to the new location that we have opened on Hudson Street, which was previously Dr. Spark's clinic, that, that facility is going to be called Bridges to Care, and that's a care coordination and integration center. I just want to just briefly share with you that we've already moved our CareLink New Mexico employees to that facility and we're ramping up with another 15 to 20 employees for Bridges to Wellness, which is a federal grant, SAMPA grant that we received. So there'll really be three things that happen there. There's going to be care coordination for our Medicaid population through CareLink New Mexico, care coordination and integration work for all other non-Medicaid patients coming out of that facility. Additionally, we will be moving some family support staff in there. So basically, our community can walk right through that door and find out what healthcare access, how to get it, and where to get it. And again, the individuals that come to this facility are not just HMS patients. So the patient, or the clients that come through the door get to choose which healthcare services and where they get them. The goal is to get people re-engaged in the healthcare that they need, whether it's medical, dental, or behavioral health. So this really is a relatively new concept in this country, and we're really proud to be taking the lead in that. We were actually at a presentation in Santa Fe last week, which has been sponsored, so it's called a Delta Grant. And what they're doing is taking this information and the data that's coming out of this work and using it nationally for best practices as we move forward to get this care coordination done. So by the way, please join us if you, if you're available Friday morning, this Friday, the 25th at 10:00 a.m., we're going to do a ribbon cutting for that new facility. Quick update on the mining district for HMS. As you know, we worked with the hospital to hopefully get established by February 1st. Unfortunately, due to licensing challenges at the state level, we have not been able to do that. So we've even have a mobile clinic that we're planning on using on February 1st. We're still keeping our fingers crossed and working with our legislators to try to get that temporary license. But right now, we haven't been able to get that, so now we're only, obviously, a couple weeks away. But we're still dedicated and committed to ensuring that we, HMS provides those ongoing services in the mining district. But unfortunately, there's been lots of challenges as we expected to get, to make that happen. But due to those challenges, again, this isn't, this is not an announcement, but as an FYI, due to the fact that we had so much trouble getting our clinic open, HMS will be providing transportation for HMS established patients from the mining district to Silver City on a route basis. We're locking up our policy on that. Our board has approved that. And so we're going to go ahead and move forward with that because we think it's the right thing to do for, for our patients and our clients that we serve. So you'll see that, you'll see that transport unit going back and forth. It's just going to be a matter of when we can get that up and running. I also wanted to provide a brief update on the border patrol situation from the eyes of HMS from our perspective. HMS has been established as a community health center in Lourdesburg since 1995. We've been serving migrants in our clinic since that time. The volumes fluctuate, but on average, it was as low as three to five migrants a month. And for the last four months, it's been up to about 35 a month, where they're coming in, being brought in by the border patrol for services during the day. I think when these, when these big influxes of groups that started coming through, they were left with no choice, especially after we closed at 6:00 p.m., to bring those individuals up to the hospital. But we've also been in dialogue with the border patrol for a couple months now. And so as we were working with Deputy Patrol Agent in Charge Hector Mias down in, down in Lourdesburg, we made a commitment to them to open up our provider schedules so that they can provide services as needed as these big groups come into Hidalgo County and Lourdesburg. So we were finalizing that, getting ready to start providing those services as of last week, when we had a final meeting with Mr. Mias, and he advised us that it was no longer needed. And the reason the services were no longer needed is because the federal government has contracted with an organization called Loyal Source, Loyal Source Government Services. And according to the agent, they have contracted with a group to provide 24/7 medical coverage within the, the facility of the border patrol. So this is good news for coverage for those migrants. Of course, we'll continue to see whatever patients they bring to us down in Lourdesburg. I'm assuming they'll continue to bring up some of these individuals to the hospital as they need it. But with that 24-hour coverage that the government has purchased, that should relieve some of the medical needs down there. So I just wanted to share that update with you all. The final update that I have for you is actually pretty exciting and it's something that I personally, along with others in this community, have been working towards, but unfortunately, as a community, we haven't been able to pull it together. But HMS has went ahead and made, made the move. And some of you may have heard of it, several years ago, as a community, we were trying to come together to create a clinically integrated network, it's called. And that's where we all come to the table to improve the quality of care delivered in our community, as well as reduce the cost of care and improve the experience for those we serve. It's perfectly aligned with the IHI's triple A. Those are the three elements, right? Improve quality, reduce costs, and improve the experience for those we serve. They've added a fourth element, which is to engage and create satisfaction for the providers that are providing services. So anyway, this clinical integration network never was, as a community, we weren't able to pull it off. But when I went to HMS in 2016, I started working with the New Mexico Primary Care Association advocating for a statewide clinical integrated network. And that officially has started as of last month. HMS has joined the Limited Liability Corporation and will be leading the efforts with the clinical integration network. What that means, you just talked, you just had an interesting conversation about the Medicaid and the Medicaid lives that we serve, not only locally, but at the state level. So what that means for us is we will be serving at HMS indirectly, instead of 6,500 Medicaid recipients, over 100,000. Which again, that means now we're coming to the table with our Medicaid MCOs to negotiate value-based alternative payment models. So we're working at the state level to drive up quality, reduce the cost of care, which in turn means for this community that our community Medicaid recipients will be getting better care. All, all seven of the FQHC that have come to the table initially are investing a significant amount of money to purchase very expensive population health software. This population health software and platform allows us to look at all the Medicaid patients in the participating network, look at those patients that need additional support through care coordination, I'm tying that back to Bridges to Care right here in town, and be able to support getting those patients in for the services they need, again, to reduce the cost of care and improve the quality of their outcomes. So this is a big deal, a big investment that HMS has made. In Centennial Care 2.0, if there's, there's language in there that we have to have risk-based contracts in place by 2020. So we're well ahead of that curve and we're quite proud to do that. The first step again is for federally qualified health centers to participate in this network. And as, as we get established and move into year two in 2020, we'll start deciding as a limited liability corporation whether we invite other local healthcare providers and/or hospitals to participate. So with that, I think that's the updates I have for you today, but I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Question.
The mining area. So as I understand it right now, you, you lost a building that you're in and you're, you're actively seeking another building. And, but there seems to be some holdups. But is there still a plan to put an HMS facility in the mining area?
Thanks for the question, Commissioner Solis. Yes, sir. The first step was to get a mobile clinic because of the licensing with our, our permanent site. And we had identified a location in Santa Clara to use on the, on the interim basis, potentially permanently. We've had trouble with the licensing of the mobile clinics on the way. That's step one. Step two is to move to a permanent location in the mining district. And HMS is absolutely committed to doing that. We're actually pursuing some federal funding. Additionally, a new access point grant has just come up with HERSA, and we're going to apply for that as well to see if we can potentially put a permanent building in place instead of a marginal.
My other question is, there seems to be a big rotation of doctors at the, at the Bear Clinic. So is that a, a plan? Is that, is that part of the structure or is that just what happens?
So I'm not sure which rotation you're referring to of providers. We have Derek Foster, who's a nurse practitioner, and Dr. Brandon Ferguson, who's an MD, who's been serving that community now for about a year. Previous to that, we had Dr. Irma Santiago, who moved back home. That's the only turnover I'm aware of in the last few years.
And before that, there was, and I know this because I've been with my wife, okay? And it's, it's hard to adjust to a new provider like that. And I was just wondering if that's just what happens or if it was a matter of practice?
You know, it's pretty, it's pretty common. About every three years, we'll have individuals leave the community. I think you're referring to, and forgive me, I'm not remembering his name, he was a physician's assistant, and he went to Albuquerque to begin medical school. So that's why he left, and forgive me, I can't remember his name. Like I said, Dr. Santiago decided to leave to go back to where her family's from. And occasionally, we'll have providers that are serving in rural areas to get their loans paid off. And when they complete that, they'll move on. Our turnover has been very low though, all in all, when you look at the number of providers we have. We employ 26 medical providers, approximately 35 behavioral health, and now we're up to five dental. So overall, our turnover is very low.
I do know that the mining area clinic is, is very busy, you know?
Yes, sir.
Because it serves all that area and it's very busy. Actually, sometimes it's pretty hard to get an appointment in there, so, thank you.
But thank you for your question. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So I have a few questions. So Loyal Source Government Services, that's the name of the company?
Yes, ma'am.
And they are contracted with either ICE or the border patrol to provide 24/7 medical services at the border patrol compound in Lourdesburg?
Correct.
Could you say?
Correct, Commissioner. Beginning February 1st, according to the agent.
Okay. And, and so theoretically, what that would mean is that all healthcare services for migrants coming in through Lourdesburg Border Patrol, if they don't need hospital services, they would potentially get it right there on-site?
Correct. It's to exclude any urgent or emergent services needed, as you stated, yes. Any of the initial screening, I think they'll, obviously, they'll be providing primary care. They are planning on providing medication services. They're going to be putting physicians and advanced practitioners in that facility, according to the agent.
So for all intents and purposes, we now have a company that is essentially going to provide services that, I mean, earlier, we were talking about money staying in our community, this is going out of our community, correct?
Correct.
Regarding the expansion of the, the bridges to coordinated care and all that sort of stuff, you know, one of the things that is, has been obvious for quite some time is how challenging it is to attract professional medical providers to Grant County. It sounds like you need a bunch of professional medical providers. How, how is the recruiting going? Do you anticipate any challenges with that? Talk about that just a little bit.
Actually, Commissioner Edwards, we actually are not having too much trouble recruiting at all for medical providers. When I started in 2016, we were down eight medical providers, and right now, we have one faculty position for a residency program open. So one MD, and then we have an opening also for a MD with OB. So technically, we're down two positions of our 26. And we have recruited quite well on the medical side. On the behavioral health side, we're doing quite well also for therapists, psychologists, et cetera. The challenge is the shortage for behavioral health providers across our country and the state. That's really where the challenge is.
Okay. And then I just want to talk about the, the mining district clinic just a little bit. So essentially, what's happening, and we have talked about this a number of times over the last few months, but the Bear Clinic is going to close at the end of January?
Correct. Excuse me, our last-day service will be the 25th, I believe it is.
Okay. And so the only way for people to, who are used to going to the Bear Clinic to get services, the only way for them to get services in their community will be to, to use your transportation services to come to Silver City, is that correct?
Actually, no, ma'am.
And so the only way for people to, who are used to going to the Bear Clinic to get services, the only way for them to get services in their community will be to use your transportation services to come to Silver City, is that correct?
Actually, no, ma'am. Previous to this clinic closure announcement, Silver Healthcare had primary care offered half a day a week. They have recently put some, they've expanded services to five days a week now. I'm assuming secondary to this gap in care that's going to be there. So there is the Silver Healthcare Clinic that's available. We're also going to continue to serve our clients at Best McCann's Transportation. And then there'll be a transition time for GRC, from what I understand, from what Taffey's told me. She'll be doing some remodeling to that clinic and then opening up primary care in that location as well. So basically, what that means is now we're going to have three different providers in the near future serving that community.
Further questions? Mr. O'Toole. Dan, thanks for the report. Please accept my apology for all the skipping.
No, no worries at all. And thank you for the opportunity. We will see you next month.
Thank you. Now we'll consider the regular meeting agenda. Manager web.
After the first item of action on your agenda is the election of the chairperson and vice-chairperson for 2018. Next item, safety performance recognition for the Grant County Road Department. Governor, do you want to speak briefly on that? Please.
Good morning, Commissioners, staff. Yes, we've been very actively trying to, I guess, for like, we've been working with the Safety Committee to recognize some individuals that have done, in my opinion, an excellent job with safety throughout the county, the county employees. And it became apparent that, and it was Jody Osment, I give her all the credit. She made it very apparent, or she brought it up, that the road department went from September 27, 2016, through August 14, 2018 without a lost time injury. Those are workdays. That is an excellent, in my opinion, and most, I mean, it's one of those sensitive departments where injuries occur quite often. And if you look throughout the state, that's pretty good. That is really, really good. So we want to recognize those employees because what I have found throughout the entire county is that there is a sincere, a very sincere worry about, or attention to safety. And everyone's concerned with safety, you know? And it's not apparent every day. I mean, people won't say, hey, I really care about safety, but it's apparent by the way that they conduct themselves on safety issues and care about getting home to their families. We do have monthly safety meetings where we talk about safety issues and just the fact that this county has a very active safety committee speaks very highly about this county and its employees. A lot of places have a hard time finding people to come to the safety committee and volunteering to be part of that safety committee, but we have a very active and very concerned group of people and who are actively trying to make this place safe for all employees. So we want to start recognizing those individuals and this is one of the first, well, to me, it's a milestone. So it's great. That's what we're going to do.
Great, thanks. 491 working days, that's incredible.
Yes, sir.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Governor. Next item on your agenda is a public hearing in regards to ordinance O-1901, entitled an ordinance authorizing a tax rebate to benefit low-income property taxpayers for taxable years 2019 through 2020. You had a special meeting where you approved the resolution for the notice of intent. So there's statute that requires counties every odd number of year to hold a public hearing to consider adopting this ordinance to offer a property tax rebate for low-income property tax owners. There's only two counties in the state that offer this, and that's Los Alamos, which is a unique county because they are a municipality as well as a county. So they have a little bit different structure of government and Santa Fe County. To be eligible for this rebate, they have to have a modified gross income of $24,000 or less. This statute is a little bit unique, with it being requirement every two years, we have to advertise this public hearing in the newspaper like we do any other adoption or consideration of adoption of an ordinance. Unique to this statute is we also have to have a radio broadcast for this particular public hearing, which is an additional cost. We've learned that the minimum to have anything on the radio here is $250 in addition to that. Commissioner Solis had mentioned at the last meeting that he was looking for some statistics or some data. We don't have statistics or data because we have no, we have no way of knowing how many individuals each year are going to fall in that low-income bracket of $24,000 or less. So the impact to the budget is unknown. The managers had some conversation around this particular topic last week and the Santa Fe County manager mentioned she really wished that they didn't have it because it's hard for her to know what that impact is going to be each year on their budget. So that's it. In a nutshell, do you have any questions?
Yeah, I was curious about that last statement. Why does it vary a lot from year to year?
Because it's based on your income, your income tax. It might, you may be below $24,000 this year, but perhaps you got a different draw when it changes next year or it doesn't. So it's-
I didn't ask that very clearly. I understand for an individual why it would change, right? My income might go above and below that. But for a county, you know, with several thousand people involved, I'd be surprised, I guess, that there were large fluctuations in the gross effect.
I can't speak to that because we don't have this-
I see.
So she did mention that there was some fluctuation. I can get some more information from her before Thursday if you would like. But we tend to be very wary of adopting anything that has a financial impact to our budget, as you all are very well aware. Property tax is our largest source of revenue. And when you adopt something that creates an unknown impact to that, that's, it's hard to, I mean, it's virtually impossible to budget for.
Do you remember the numbers from Santa Fe County? It took years for it to level out. I can grab my folder. I apologize, I should have burned out here. I was thinking that Santa Fe, I want to say 300,000, but it was, you're probably right. But after several years, it will probably level out and be more comparable to the demographics of the area. But what our call from Santa Fe was that they started out somewhat high and then it just kept increasing. And I, that's probably not because, in general, the demographics are changing, the incomes probably aren't changing, but more people are figuring out to take, you know, to take advantage of this rebate. I see what you're saying. I think the difficulty is you don't know where it's going to go until maybe it does level up. I don't know if that-
Yeah, you are right.
I do have some numbers from several years ago. They're not actual numbers. They're some estimates that I took based on Santa Fe being somewhat similar to Silver City. And then I divided it by five to kind of figure out where possibly, not Silver City, but Grant County could fall in there. I think I came up with it could have been anywhere between 60 to 100 starting out, but that was based on some numbers of several years ago.
60 to 100 individual taxpayers?
What it was, was I was trying to figure out what the cost to Grant County would be based on what the cost was in Santa Fe.
So the numbers that you just said, 60 to 100, was that money or was that people?
That was money.
60 to 100,000?
60 to 100. Again, I need to-
Because I never heard of 1,000. That wouldn't have made me realize it was money.
Right. Because that's what we're looking at.
$60,000 a year as a rough, rough guess.
Again, I need to look at where Santa Fe is now because again, that was several years ago.
Sure.
And who I, I think I maybe spoke with the county attorney maybe at that time and they were having the same, they had the same concerns that probably most counties considering this have, is that it's difficult to know where it's going to go. I believe it jumped quite a bit after they implemented. So my understanding is actually what Charlie was saying is accurate in that it's very difficult to budget for a while because it can jump.
Well, it would certainly potentially increase faster than the property tax revenues would, right?
Absolutely. Because one year, you, you know, people are kind of learning about it.
You're right.
But because they're unrelated factors.
We're not going to see a, we're not going to see this kind of an increase in property tax revenue.
Correct. I mean, and I'm just saying the basis for the rebate is completely separate.
Commissioner Edwards, you don't mean a long-term increase, right? You mean an increase because we're starting from zero. A long-term increase absolutely can be projected to be a roughly reasonable proportion of property taxes. The rebate is capped at $350 per taxpayer. I mean, they call a taxpayer is a taxpaying household.
I guess I just want, the thing that I'm trying to wrap my head around is I'm not, I'm not convinced that property taxes are the place where we should be considering doing different kinds of rebates or, you know, special dispensations on property tax. I'm just trying to wrap my head around it.
It's telling to me that only two counties in the state are doing this enough. Mr. Ponce?
Does the assessor's office, I don't know who this question will go to, have something in place for elderly and low-income anyway to assist them?
Mr. Chairman, board members, Commissioner Ponce, yes, we do have something in place at this moment and I know we've gone through this with the rebates. And I have dealt with the Santa Fe County when they didn't know how much they were budgeting for, you know, for these rebates. So it does fluctuate. It actually was a lot when it first started and they didn't really have a hold on how much of the, how much of the budget was going to be impacted. Los Alamos also. However, the thing is, is at this moment, we do have a valuation freeze for anybody that's 65 years and older and if you have an income of $32,000 or less, and what happens there, it just freezes the valuation. You have to come in, proof of your age, income, using your state and federal income tax. And what happens there is it actually freezes those values for three years. However, you have to come in and file the documents in the assessor's office between January 1 and until May. And what happens there is you do it consecutively for three years. Once you do that for three years, it automatically stays in the system until the property has been transferred. But yes, we have close to about 65 at this moment that file for the 65-year and older. And thank you for asking for that question there, Commissioner Ponce.
No, thank you. 65.
65 households now that are applying for that.
That is correct. And it is a combined modified income. So if there's two individuals living there, three individuals, child, if they're getting an income, they have to file all of that. But it is in effect and we do send out letters and we do make it public, like our county manager stated that we do make it public and it does come out in the newspapers stating that they have all the rights to file for the 65-year and older income freeze.
Mr. Chairman, what do they consider income? What was the definition of income?
It's actually a modified gross income. For example, if you're retired, your social security, there's actually a list, royalties, accounts in your banks, it actually has a list on that. So it is a modified gross income. That's what you file? That is correct. If you don't file, you actually have what they call a PRC where you don't file, you actually get a letter from the federal government stating that you don't file that exactly what we need in the assessor's office.
But I know that they consider retirement benefits different. Because they're not earned with money.
That is included on the retirement benefits. Yes, sir.
So all of them that deserve any income. So that freeze essentially saves those beneficiaries a 3% maximum increase.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brown, yes, that does freeze, it does freeze the 3% cap on that. Thanks for asking.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to get a handle on this. So 65 households are being saved between 3% and 9% of valuation on their property.
3% to 6%.
I thought the last three, nine years.
Well, for the last nine years, yes. Between 3, 3 to 9, yeah. That sounds good. Looking at the two-year factor.
Commissioner Ponce asked about other exemptions. Are there, are there straight-up exemptions such as the head of household that apply to elderly and low-income?
Matter of fact, if you are, you know, if you qualify for the 65-year and older, it's a valuation freeze. However, if you have a head of household exemption, that subtracts off your taxable value of 2,000, of your taxable value. And it all depends what district you are on your tax rate. It averages about $40 to $50 in taxes. And if you are a veteran, you do have a $4,000 off your taxable side and you're close to about $100 in property taxes, depending on what district you're in. And they do have a 100% disabled, where you are 100% disabled, you are automatically off the rolls at 100% disabled. And that is all proven by the Veterans Administration up in Albuquerque. You receive a certificate, it's like a peach-colored certificate, once you're off of the tax rolls, that listed property gets transferred. And those are your actual exemptions.
So you could have more and more exemptions?
That is correct. And once again, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, once again, if you are, if you are 100% disabled and you do own other properties, like for example residential or non-residential, you can utilize that other certificate of the $4,000 off your taxable side on other properties. You also can use it off your licensing, you know, for your vehicles. But once we put, we place that in the system, it's a lot easier for us to keep track and you don't have to come in and out. Once it's in the system, it pretty much stays in the system.
I grabbed that old photo that I had. And the numbers for Santa Fe, they adopted this in 2009 and they started around 300,000. And then by 2013, they were up to around 500,000. So that shows you how much it could increase. And then when I compared it to our population, or with our population, it was in between 60 and 100,000. It could fall somewhere in there. I don't know what Santa Fe's current numbers are, though.
2013 is the last statistic you have?
That's, that's when I looked into it. And certainly I can follow up or, you know?
And still, if not comparing it, Santa Fe are maybe wealthier or poorer than Grant County?
Well, again, I looked at that and they were, they were somewhat similar. I know that there are some very wealthy people up there, but when I compared it, it was close. But you're right, it does seem like this community probably has a larger community of people that have the income that would fall within this based on our location and-
This seems unpredictable.
I agree.
I understand that possibility. Two years ago, I was convinced I didn't want to touch it because of that, but I'm less convinced of that now. Did you also look at the difference between property values in those areas? Because what the rebate is, is a percentage of your tax bill. It's capped at 350. But you'd hit that cap more often if your property values were higher. And it's certainly my impression that Santa Fe property values are higher than Grant County.
For sure. No, I did a cursory, you know, I just kind of thought out, how can I come up with something at the time that I could- how can I come up with something at the time that I could give you an idea of, you know, range it could follow?
Commissioner Ponce mentioned during his campaign a few times, you know, a conversation you'd had with elderly six-to-income women. I'm sure that was a conversation repeated more than once, and it wasn't just that one person. You know, there's not, maybe we don't get that many opportunities to address that exact situation. So while indeed, two years ago, I was scared off by the unpredictability, I think I'm feeling more like I understand county finances and more like I'm interested in seeing what the impact would be here, when we, if we adopt an ordinance. In that ordinance, we can specify what years it applies to. And so we can say it's a one-year or a two-year thing to get a sense for the effect. So I guess I'm just finding my fellow commissioners, no, I'm actually considering this, whereas two years ago, I was, I didn't want to touch it.
I want to know the percentage. A hundred-thousand-dollar valuation, you know, what percentage would, how do they arrive to the three-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar max? So, so what valuation do you have to have to have a three-hundred-and-fifty-dollar max? Do you have any idea, Mr. Ponce?
Can you please repeat that on the hundred-thousand?
I think it depends on factors within the statute, not just-
No, but, but we got, we can make a start there. So if you have a hundred-thousand-dollar property value, and you take a third of that, you've done the thirty-three thousand or so, right? And then if, for the average mortgage, it's twenty?
I would say five. I would imagine it's about nineteen dollars per thousand.
Nineteen dollars?
Yeah, a little nineteen.
So if I can call it twenty with permission, to make the math easier, six-hundred-and-sixty dollars?
About six-hundred, yeah, about six-thirty.
Is that right? Can I do that for you?
So on that, what would be the rebate?
So then you'd look at your income. And if your income were the highest range, twenty-two to twenty-four thousand, the rebate would be a third of that, so two-hundred-and-twenty dollars. If your income were the lowest, let's say you had under eight thousand income, you'd get seventy-five percent of that back, so four-hundred-and-eighty dollars or so. Except that would be capped at three-hundred-and-fifty. So your income would have to be, you know, just, I think I'm anticipating your question. To reach the cap, your income would need to be about sixteen thousand dollars a year or below.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners?
Yes.
I, the statute does give a tax rebate table, which, as Commissioner Brown just quoted, if your modified tax income is zero to eight thousand, your property tax rebate is seventy-five percent of the tax liability. If your income is twenty-two thousand to twenty-four thousand, you will see a thirty-five percent of the property tax liability. Subsection E of that, section of the statute says, "If a taxpayer's modified gross income is zero, the taxpayer may claim a tax rebate in the amount shown in the first row of the table. The tax rebate provided for in this section shall not exceed three-hundred-and-fifty dollars per return. And if a return is filed separately, that could have been filed jointly, the tax rebate shall not exceed one-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars. No tax rebate shall be allowed to any taxpayer whose modified gross income exceeds twenty-four thousand dollars." So once again, how do you quantify that?
So what, so what we would essentially be talking about, the demographic that would, in my mind, based on past experience, the demographic that would likely to benefit from this would be seniors. And I say that, and please correct me if, if I'm headed down the wrong road here, but I say that because it's more likely that a senior would own a property at that income level. And so the benefit would likely go mostly to seniors. And so would that benefit then be in addition to the, to the benefit that we already have for people over sixty-five? And so the advantage would be that people over sixty-five who are property owners who are earning a thousand dollars or less in social security or whatever it is, would potentially get their property tax built down to zero, right? Isn't that, is that-
It could not get down to zero, right? It caps, your highest refund is seventy-five percent. So you'd still be paying a quarter-
A quarter of it.
Of your bill.
But, you know, for somebody that has, you know, a hundred bucks a month to spend on groceries, three-hundred-and-fifty dollars is a lot of money.
Sure, I've got a hundred and thirty.
And I'm, I'm looking at the demographics of my district, where we have a lot of retirees. We have a lot of retirees from the mine. So I'm feeling that a pretty good percentage of those would qualify under the twenty-four thousand.
Well, there, there are also a lot of people in your district, women who are widows, who are property owners, who are all.
Yes. So I can tell you for sure that, that many don't even know about freezing their tax, you know. And, and, and I know we've done the due diligence and, and posting and put the papers and all that, but they just don't know about it. So if this was enacted by us, then once they started learning, and this would be more, because, you know, the word of mouth in my area, then I think that there would be quite a few.
So, so given that, what is, I'm, I'm really trying to work this out in my head here. So let's just say, for the sake of the conversation, that it costs the county a hundred thousand dollars a year to do this. You said between six to a hundred thousand is what you'd estimate it was.
Yeah, that was seven years.
So let's just say, for, for round numbers sake, it costs the county a hundred thousand dollars to enact this. What would the same people who are benefiting from this lose in county services? Just throwing that out there as a question, really. What, what would be the loss in county services if they're not getting?
It would be a hundred-thousand-dollar hit on the budget.
Right. And so would that be, you know, would that be in snow removal? Would that be in trash?
Would it hurt more?
Right. Would it hurt more than help? That is my question. Would it hurt more than help?
Mr. Chairman? I didn't want to-
No, I'm not, no, I'm not looking at you like that. I'm just trying to wrap my head around that.
Mr. Chairman, on, on what Commissioner Edwards is pointing out, I wanted to make clear that is certainly not something I looked into, and you made a good point that, you know, the, the budget available to Santa Fe is probably drastically different than-
Agreed.
Than Greck County comparatively, because of the cost of Santa Fe. I did not look into that.
A hundred thousand dollars hit on our budgets pretty successfully.
And to think that it could be a hundred-and-fifty thousand, a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand if it goes, it's hard to quantify.
And the bad thing is that there's no data. There's, there's nothing that you can go off of to make a really good estimate, you know. So it would just be, whatever happens, happens. And that's, you can't budget for that unless you budget at the high end, you know, it'd be-
Which is why I think for a hundred thousand dollars, I would recommend that we budget at the high end if we do this. And I want to be clear, I'm not convinced we should. It's just that I'm actually thinking about it now, that we would then have a chance to actually get that, right? And we've been operating in the dark. Two years ago, I did the exact same thing. We have no idea. It's unpredictable. But we don't, we don't have very many tools to, well, to enable income fixing from people.
So do we have to make a decision at the January meeting? Is this something that we could table until February?
It's January.
The statute is pretty clear. It says you will consider this in January. I'm sure that Abby will weigh in on that from a legal perspective, but that's just January. A very odd number here that you must consider the specifics.
Now, the way you can postpone it is in January, you, you resolve to adopt an ordinance, but then you don't actually hold the ordinance hearing for a while, because that's not specified, right?
You have to have it within thirty days, I believe. So we're having the hearing the same day that you're going to, that we've scheduled you to adopt the ordinance, but you-
To adopt the ordinance or the resolution?
You've already adopted the resolution.
The, the ordinance. We've been on the same day because scheduling that, that works.
We adopted the res-
We adopted a resolution of a-
To consider the ordinance.
Yeah.
When did we do that?
The special meeting.
The special meeting we did, that's all right. Thank you.
So you, you, you could potentially have the hearing, but you need to adopt the ordinance within thirty days. Is what the statute says, I believe.
So my question would be, this ordinance would pass, how long does it stay in effect for the two years?
No, it doesn't stay in effect.
You may have to consider it every two years.
It's obviously been considered, but yeah, in twenty twenty-one, as far as for two years.
It says if you, you might consider it, but the language in the statute says if you do not have the ordinance in place, that you have to consider it every two years. But there's nothing that says that you couldn't reconsider it, and you can always rescind that ordinance.
In the past, we would specify the number of years that it applies. So we would have to decide that. It wouldn't just be something we could forget about. It affects the way it says it, right? The, the ordinance that we adopt must specify when, what years, what tax years it will apply to. So we would say it applies to twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, whatever we decide. And so we could have a short leash on the project, basically, in order to evaluate the data. It would force us to reconsider it, even though we'd no longer be required by statute to reconsider it.
We would by ordinance.
We would by ordinance.
Well, there's a lot to take into consideration. I mean, services, any new budget, you know, I mean, I'm all for, for helping, but, you know, it's something that we really need to-
Well, I can tell you, in, in my district, I can think of ten people already that are widows, that they're, you know, they lost it, they're on one income, and that includes the, the social security, and maybe, most of those are, they get a percentage of the spousal tax, which is usually a mill, and that would put them way under the twenty-four thousand. And the people that I'm thinking of right now, none of them has even applied for a freeze. So I, I, I think that as it started, then it would probably increase until it plateaued.
Can we, can we cap the amount, the dollar amount?
No, it looks really like the statute specifies that in ways that we can't adjust.
Well, I agree with you, Commissioner Solis. You know, in my work at the Law and Insurance Center, I know, I know a number of people, widows particularly, who are living on minimum social security or not much more than that, that would benefit from all of this, from knowing about the freeze, from, you know, these other things.
Commissioner, the statistics will be very difficult to budget for. And as you alluded to, what would be the impact to county services, I can't give you that answer today. And not knowing what that is, and it taking one or two years to figure that out, it's, it's very similar to how the copper taps, we took over a two-hundred-thousand-dollar hit this year, even though we thought we had good solid figures. But, you know, that, that's difficult to, to overcome when our budget is as tight as it is. So I, not knowing what the impact could be, I can never recommend this from my position as county manager to you because of the unknown financial impact. We worked really hard to try to, to increase our cash reserves and, and be more financially responsible, and this would just, I could never, I could never recommend this, not knowing. And it's very difficult. The only county that we can compare it to is Santa Fe County, and their demographics, their taxes are much different than ours. So when Abby did that five years ago, that was a shot in the dark to try to give you some sort of guidance as to what the impact would be here. It's, it was, it was a stretch, but that was the best that, that we were able to come up with at the time. We can try to do some more, take those figures, and look at what Santa Fe County's looking at now. I can, either Abby can talk to their attorney, or I can talk to the manager. But still, the comparison, and the, and the difference in the demographics in the counties are pretty far ends of the spectrum, in my opinion.
So one thing that occurs to me also is that, taking, taking into consideration what Commissioner Solis said about the people he's thinking about that don't know about the freeze, at the very least, what we should probably be thinking about doing is figuring out how we can make sure that people who are eligible for what we already offer are actually getting it. I'm not, I'm not suggesting that I know what that looks like at this very moment, but it seems like if we have benefits in place, that we should be making sure that people understand those. And perhaps, in that effort, what we would gain is a better idea of how something like this might impact.
Mr. Ponce, is, I'm sorry. Is there some, you said sixty-five?
Matter of fact, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Commissioner, Vice Chair, Edwards, actually, as when all this has started, you see the system, once it's in the system, we have to calculate that after the three years, that actually stays in there. The ones that have not filed, and let's say they need another year or two years, we actually send them letters stating that you have to come in, fill out, so you can have your actual three years. At this moment, and I just got my, some texts off my, my employees, so we've got about two-hundred-and-thirty total since all this has started, okay? And applied is about sixty at this time. And not only that, we are going to go into the senior centers come the first week of February, and I do this every year, for all the senior centers, to let them know, we take the applications, and so it is, it is a handful of people that are actually getting this freeze. We will announce it on the radio as much as possible. And not only that, we do have our notice of intent on the, on our, on our daily newspaper for the notices of valuations that be mailed out on April 1st. But during the rendition period, we actually pick them up during, during the month of May, even though during the protest period of the month of May also.
So that's great, that you go to the senior centers. I would also just say that food distributions are probably, you know, we have, we have food distributions that people, seniors attend, probably more regularly than lunch at the senior center. So if you were really going, if you were really looking for these people, to me, that would be a better place to go than-
Just the senior center.
And I also think that moving forward, for us to be able to get a good estimation, it would probably be some sort of a survey that we could take out and do it in a manner that we could say that really reflects the population that, that we're dealing with. So, you know, even a door-to-door or something, you know. I, I'm sure everybody, when they were campaigning, going door-to-door, you know, they, they, they saw so many people. And I, I can tell you, there's a lot of people in my district that they don't go to, senior citizens. They don't, they're pretty much at home.
Well, they don't, and, you know, a big part of that is that they don't have the transportation there.
Exactly, exactly. So a flyer at the door, a survey at the door, or something like that. And maybe we could talk about something, so that the next time this comes, we can have some firmer data to say, hey, this is what hit we would take to the budget. Then we can talk to our county manager and say, what would you do to absorb a hundred-thousand-dollar hit? And see if that's anything viable that we can do.
Or it might end up being fifty thousand.
Exactly. Whatever it is, it is.
Mr. Chairman, the ordinance is finally, we met with the assessor's affiliate, and I do believe that there possibly might be a bill where they're going to lower the, the income also on these sixty-five-year-olds, and that's just on FII at this moment.
You mean they would make seniors eligible for that freeze at a lower income?
Yes, they actually wanted to do a higher. However, they're in the process of-
Yes, they actually wanted to do a higher, however, they're in the process of looking on a lower on the value, on the income itself.
Well, one thing that strikes me about some of these things too is that, you know, like, like the county manager said, like the county attorney said a few minutes ago, you know, what, what is good in Santa Fe does not apply to Grant County. And to just, you know, make these decisions that are the same for Santa Fe as they are for Grant County, doesn't make a lot of sense, because the impact is just not set.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Edwards, that's exactly how the three percent cap actually started, and that's a really big discussion. You guys have another hour. Any further discussion?
No, we're done.
Let's put this in those. Further discussion, item?
I just, I just want to thank you, Rebecca, for the conversation.
Yeah. Okay, moving on.
And I have a little bit of a couple of minutes, you have five seconds minutes in your packets for your review. Moving on to financial reports, consideration of the January eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen expenditure report, Randy Wood, trouble, highlight the report, please.
And in front of you in your packet, you have an expenditure report period ending January eighteenth, for a total of two million four hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars and seventy-eight cents. Of that, accounts payable will be one point eight million, and payroll covering three pay periods will be six hundred and thirty thousand. To highlight some of the major expenses we incurred during this period are the Southwest Solid Waste Authority for forty-one thousand, which covers the November twenty eighteen tipping fees, Ride Express fleet services for twenty-three thousand eight hundred for the November twenty eighteen fuel charges, Fuel Center Plus Inc. for nineteen thousand for off-road diesel for the road department, Vital Core Health Strategies for fifty-four thousand one hundred dollars for November twenty eighteen inmate health services, Ascent Aviation for nineteen thousand for jet fuel purchase, Tyler Technologies for thirteen thousand seven hundred for software maintenance for our H R time sheet and systems management, Bohan and Houston for forty-nine thousand one hundred dollars for airport terminal preliminary engineering report, Ramito Guevas for ten thousand four hundred for the painting of the exterior buildings for Whiskey Creek, both stations one and two, New Mexico Human Services Department for one hundred thousand for the second quarter of the safety net care pool contribution, Advanced Communications and Electrical for thirteen thousand three hundred for portable handheld radios for the Sheriff's Department, Summit Food Service for twenty-one thousand four hundred for the November twenty eighteen inmate meals and medical snacks, payment to Grant County from clinical meals funds for twenty-four thousand for August and September twenty eighteen reimbursements, payment to Grant County from D W I program funds for D W I bus passes for thirty thousand, Z Three Planners for eleven thousand six hundred for a volumetric survey, Hurley Pit and Little Walnut Road ownership and road plat, Ascent Aviation for seventy-eight thousand six hundred for jet fuel purchase, Healy Regional Medical Center, twenty-three thousand eight hundred, November twenty eighteen engine and claims, which you guys approved the last meeting, I believe, payment to Cubal Group for fifty thousand, security electronics upgrades at the detention center, this is done through a capital appropriation, which is reimbursable, payment to High Desert Humane Society for sixteen thousand three hundred, the quarterly August through December animal control services contribution, Vital Core Health Strategies for fifty-one thousand eight hundred, December twenty eighteen inmate health services, and Ride Express fleet services for twenty thousand four hundred for December twenty eighteen fuel charges.
Any questions?
Question?
Yeah, on that, taking from the bottom, the Vital Core Health Strategies, L S E, how does that compare? I should know, but how does that compare to prior months?
It's going to be depending upon, um, stiping, unless, I don't know, overtime or not, it has been from forty-eight to fifty-five thousand.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions on the expenditure report? Okay, thank you.
Moving on to new business, item J, consideration of inventory transfers and deletions. Statute requires that when we remove items from our capital inventory, that it comes before the board's review approval, and that we must submit those items to the State Attorney's Office. What you have for, we're requesting transfers of a vehicle from the Humane Society to the Roads Department, and two vehicles from the senior programs, one to detention and one to the airport. Deletions consist of two S O, Sheriff's Office units that were ripped and to be established, they were declared a complete loss by the insurance adjuster, and also removal of a printer. Questions, concerns during that item? Next item, consideration of territorial charter day proclamation. Mr. Torriado, you've submitted this, do you want to talk about that briefly?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, we actually have a gathering come Saturday, the February sixteenth of two thousand and nineteen, and the mayor has asked me to participate on this territorial charter day. Actually, we do have a reenactment of eighteen seventy-eight when it was, became a charter. So I actually would like to have the proclamation not only here for the county, because we were actually territorial, and also in the town of Silver City. So if I may, I would just like to give the commissioners these flyers on all the events that are going on. I do believe that we do have a very good committee that they're actually want to make this thing as strong as possible, so Silver City and Grant County to be recognized as from a territorial to, you know, to a territorial charter day. So let me just go ahead and give you the gathering.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item L, and for consideration of the staff's time, I would like, while she's here, Rebecca Winger is here, I would like for her to briefly discuss both items that pertain to her on the agenda. Item L is consideration of out-of-state travel for Rebecca Winger to attend the FAA's Southwest Regional Annual Airport Conference, February eleventh through the thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen in Hurst, Texas. Currently, our travel policy requires that any out-of-state travel requires commission approval. And also, if she could speak briefly on item T, which is consideration of Agreement Number A nineteen zero five with the New Mexico Department of Transportation through its aviation division for terminal building renovation and code compliance.
Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Commissioner. First is the travel, that is an FAA conference, they do it annually, it's for them to meet with us, these are the people who approve our funding requests for our capital projects, as well as going over any changes in regulation, and gives us a chance that we get to actually see them and they get to see us, and I think it helps us in our attempt to get better funding. So the conference doesn't cost anything, it's just the amount of travel to get there and hotel. And the next one is, I was really happy with this one, but state aviation is stepping up and they're going to help fund our terminal renovation project, so overall project was six hundred thousand dollars. The feds, because of the way they do their funding, they will only help with the part of the property that is public. So the part that we lease to Advanced Air and that is considered our commercial property, and they will not help with that, but the state does not have that same issue, so they've stepped forward and are going to do ninety percent of what the feds want, so they're going to give us two hundred and four thousand dollars toward our project, that leaves the county with thirty-one thousand two hundred toward this project. Yeah, so it's really great. Any questions?
I have some questions that are related to that. Yeah, what's the meaning of life? Okay, no, it's not quite that, Jim. So I guess I could have been brought this up personally, but instead of the public meeting, but the lighting at the airport, we were out there last night to catch, put someone on the flight to Phoenix, and I guess, is that in the plans for this renovation open?
It is. The lighting is just horrible out there. You should bring a flashlight if you're going to come from the parking lot to the terminal building.
Great, and would it be okay for her to give a quick update on the Advanced Air versus Boutique service? Could you do that?
Yes. Oh, yeah, no, this has been, obviously, it's been a huge change for us. The new service has just been tremendous, obviously, they've only been with us since the sixth, but in that amount of time, they've had one delay of an hour and a half, and that was mechanical, that they were able to fix on the ground, and the flight went ahead. Compared to December, where we had thirty-four cancellations from boutique, I mean, it just, it was-
Thirty-four cancellations?
Thirty-four cancellations.
In one month?
And the delays were, I think I counted a hundred and thirty-five notifications for delays. It was just a terrible month. So I'm really pleased with Advanced, they have a good team on the ground, they're doing good training, they have a local phone number, not just telling people, call an eight-hundred number anymore, they have someone that answers the phone locally, will help people. As far as operationally for us, they're buying about, oh, a little bit more than fifty percent more fuel than we were getting from boutique. We're averaging about a hundred and eighty gallons of fill, so we're going to see a good substantial bump in our income from that, but all in all, I couldn't be happier with it. It's been really tremendous. I appreciate your support in the change, I know that you guys took a lot of heat for that, but they've been really doing a great job for us.
For the commission information, I was requested to write a letter to Mayor Carlsbad because Advanced Air is bidding on that service. One advantage to us of that is there to be another plane in the route system that could help cover delays, non-weather-related delays, of course. Yeah, mechanical issues, we have another plane in the system and more pilots.
Yeah, we actually have an aircraft dedicated to our airport, and they have a plan for recovery where they switch them out, you know, once a week, they take the aircraft back, they put it through maintenance, they're actually leasing space from Scott Nichols, they keep their aircraft inside overnight, they clean between every flight, they have people going to the aircraft and do cleaning, it's just a very nice service.
Any further comment or question?
I have, there's two blocks of tickets, and they're still working the king side in the bulk ticket purchases, but they've been extraordinarily good about addressing my problems, what I call them, and I've just been really impressed so far.
I traveled to Santa Fe on the hundred and twenty-five dollar round trip with the block purchase, and it's an incredible price.
And I do want to say that I'm a big believer in going to your conferences, because you learn things that are state-of-the-art, and you see people that you deal with, and you put faces to names and all that. So I was, I'm actually waiting to see that there's more of this stuff, you know, with the different departments, you know, I T, Sheriff, stuff like that, but I think that it's a integral part of keeping up and just keeping your departments in line with the future.
Thanks, anything further? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item M, and I'm going to let her talk about, she had actually one, two, three, four, five items on the agenda that all pertain to the local D W I grant distribution program, grant application. So item M, Q, R, S, and item D D all pertain to Cindy's D W I program. So for the sake of her time, I'm going to let her explain all of those items all at once, and unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast of this program.
Yes, thank you so much. Good morning, Commissioners. For those of you who do not know me, I think only one does not, I'm Cindy Blackman, the Administrator of the Grant County D W I Prevention Program, and been doing this for almost twenty years. So for those items, this, the statement of assurances, the memorandum of understanding, the assurances, so that is R, the N, the R, the S, and the resolution, which is D D, are all for my fiscal year twenty application. Those are just the forms that D F A, Department of Finance Administration, makes us turn in every year and get approved by our commissioners. So those are just kind of the standard. I have not done the budget for fiscal year twenty yet, that will be on February's, we just got the numbers, for those of you who don't, who are new to this, the distribution budget is kind of a guesstimate, they think what kind of taxes they're going to collect from one year and to the next year. Most of the time, they're pretty correct, and we get about the amount that we're supposed to last year, they were six, we were six thousand dollars short, so we always have to be very careful about spending our money when you talk about not knowing how your budget is and stuff, we're one of those programs that don't very well for the distribution. Grant is kind of set in stone, it's one point nine million, the other is based on how much they collect. So my budget, I'll be looking at that, my client council has to approve it, and then at the February meeting, I'll be bringing the budget to you. The other item is the amendment to the contract for Recovery Management Center, which does our treatment services, and that was a grant, our new grant, that was approved by you in November, I believe. So that amount was already approved, we just gave them five thousand dollars additional money, because recovery management generally provides more in services than they actually charge us for. So we're going to spend about fifty thousand, the total contract will be fifty thousand for them, they generally provide them close to sixty thousand dollars in services, so we get to use some in-kind money for that, and we sure appreciate them continuing to see our clients, irregardless of the fact that their contract money runs out. And I stand for any questions?
No questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, M, consideration of the two thousand and nineteen Voluntary Fire and Rescue Annual Election of Officers, this is actually a requirement of P R C as well as the bylaws that the officers be approved by the commission, so for all nine voluntary fire departments, consider approval of their strength of officers. Item L, consideration of the Service Report and EMS Fund Act Local Funding Program Application for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty, the EMS Fund Act requires your approval of their application for funding, we have seven voluntary fire departments that have EMS services, and one of those includes Healy Regional, their EMS fund act is approved through our organs, it's a colonial hospital. Item T, discussion of the process regarding New Mexico State Senate District Twenty-Eight vacancy letter submitted to Governor Michelle Wuhan Guisham, Commissioner Brown requested this item on the agenda.
Do you want to speak to that now or wait till Thursday?
My first would be to talk briefly, to actually talk about it, but I can tell you that what I'm looking for, I guess, is a full understanding of how it all happened. And initially, what I asked for this was out of my own curiosity and some discomfort, but I think it's important to do at the public meeting also, because I've gotten a number of comments from folks who, I think there were maybe some kind of conspiracy at work, and the more we can air in public how it came about, and I think the less concerned there will be that there was something wrong that happened, because I don't believe there was anything wrong that happened, it's just, I need to understand how it then-
Okay, very good.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm just, I think it should be, I think, one of the things. Okay, very good. Thank you.
So the next section of your agenda is agreements, and we've already covered all of those, resolutions. Consideration of Resolution R nineteen zero one, Open Meetings Act for two thousand and nineteen, in your packets, you have two versions, one is the current version of our Open Meetings Act Resolution, with changing the dates to reflect some scheduling conflicts that some of you had, the second version is based upon request by Commissioner Brown to consider public input at all meetings, with the exception of emergency meetings, so you have two versions that you can consider on Thursday. Is there any other resolutions?
I also have something that I would like to add to this, and my apologies to county staff or elected officials for not being as prepared as Mr. Brown is on this. I would like for us to consider having a work session, making some changes to how the work session works, and one of the things I'd like for us to think about is to have the work session on a Thursday before the Thursday meeting, so instead of the Tuesday before, the Thursday before- before. And the reason for that is because I would also like for us to consider having it in the late afternoon, so that the public can attend, so more of the public can attend the work session. I think the meeting that we do happens in the work session, and my thinking around this is that in order to accommodate county staff and elected officials, and maybe the meeting would start like somewhere around four o'clock, and county reports and things like that would come first, and then the rest of the work session. And I don't, you know, I totally own that I didn't bring this up sooner. It's been something that's been percolating in my mind for a while, and it just snuck upon me, and so I would be happy to table that part of it for further consideration, because we could amend it, right? So, I just want to put out there that I'd like for us to consider that.
You know, I'm going to agree with that, I'd like to also see some meetings take place in the evening hours, and I was thinking more five-thirty, maybe even the consideration of alternating them, one month having them in the morning like we do now, next month at five-thirty or whatever it may be, just so we can see if we can get more participation from our public, you know. I'm going to hide behind, I was just learning, I didn't mean to put this all on me today, so, but since it was brought up, I thought I'd do that, so that's, I think that would be good.
I would go with both ideas, because I reckon the options, the people that can come during the day, and then the next, the people that come during the evening.
Yeah, I wanted to clear on the logic of the connection between starting in the afternoon for the fact that it'll never just end in having to be on Thursday instead of on the Tuesday. Why is that?
Well, because the other thing is, is that we, it doesn't leave very mu, if we do it on Tuesday evenings, it doesn't leave very much time.
On Monday?
If we want to learn.
Monday would be acceptable.
And I think Mondays are taken, I don't think there are any Mondays available. I couldn't agree with that.
You mean for our room meeting?
Yeah.
This is our room. I mean, seriously, if that's what we want to do, that's the best thing for the county, someone else can adjust, right?
Not me.
I certainly stand by it.
The Thursday to Thursday would leave us a lot of time for investigating anything, but it'd also leave us a lot of time to forget what we're there.
Yeah, and not only that, I see the problem is that you've cut off roughly three days of getting materials ready for us.
Yeah.
And I can imagine a number of times we have new things presented to complete work irregularly, that would be best to avoid.
So, I'm open to Monday, because I'm not open to Tuesday.
Who is opening it on Tuesday? Who has a room?
Oh, okay, I'm, no, I'm off to town that one.
Tuesday.
Oh.
Those are going to be a conflict.
Just tells you how long it's been suspended.
As far as having meetings, I'm sorry.
I just said it tells you how long it's been suspended.
As far as having meetings on an evening, what would be the cost of that? You'd have to face staff overtime, right? That'd be my consideration, I mean, how would we determine that?
A conflict.
Okay.
That's why I was suggesting four o'clock, is because, you know, I do think it's possible that the public would be interested in county reports, but I think they're more interested in the other stuff, and that was sort of a balance between your idea of doing it at five-thirty, so people can attend everything, and getting county staff and elected officials to help.
And the only reason I was saying five-thirty, because of the work day, getting people, you know, getting home, giving them time to at least kick their shoes off and do that, but I'm open to anything. I mean, I think the goal here, what I'm looking at, or taking into consideration, giving opportunity to others that do have a day job to come in and come to these meetings, and that's what I was looking at. You know, the time, you know, we can look at that, it's set in stone, hard proposed.
What does the average person get out of work, five or five-thirty?
Probably five.
Two to four-five.
Yeah. So, there was, in the classes that I attended the last trip to Santa Fe...
Have joined.
There was some questions about the amount of time that we allow for public comment. They're seeing to be surprised, surprised that we allowed five minutes versus three minutes. I think that's something to consider. I don't know what the rest of the Commission feels about limiting public comment to three minutes versus five minutes.
I'm a bit of a five myself.
Okay.
I think there, I have not noticed many times at all, in a very small number of times, that someone's used that, but I think if they consider a piece in three minutes, they do, and if it takes five, generally, it's useful information for us.
You know, I mean, five sounds like a good timeframe. I'm, you know, some of the comments I was hearing in Santa Fe about three minutes, you know, to me, I think the public comment helps us a lot, especially for we, they have input on these resolutions. I know sometimes it may get skewed a little bit, but you know, that is a right to come up here and, like you said, vent or say what they need to say. I would look at maybe three minutes would be a good thing, you know, because they are there to help us and maybe give us their take on some of these resolutions and what they feel, and I think that's very helpful, but, you know, five, three and five would work for me, but whatever the majority of you would think.
I'm sorry. My one was that further, I'd like to see us open our public comments to anything, and then after that, public comments on the agenda, so that there's two separate, you know, that people know that, hey, at this time, I can talk about anything I want to, and then after that's both, then on Agenda Items.
But still, five minutes?
And I'm, you know, I haven't been here that long, but I don't know whether three or five minutes...
You know, I understand what you're saying, but I think if we put public input into two different places, you know, we're discussing about, you know, moving these meetings also, or maybe having them in the evening, that, you know, I mean, we have, they're already looking at us like, hurry up, you know, that might drag on and take more time. I would feel comfortable with when we have it, and possibly three minutes, but I'm open to five.
And I mean, leave it as it is, but it's not, there's going to be two, at the beginning, you know, public comments on anything, and then, you know, the chairman can announce, okay, now public comments on Agenda Items, so that there's two separate, that way it measures.
Our current public input doesn't actually say that it has to be limited to Agenda Items.
Right.
So, one consideration would be to specify, maybe in the language, in our current public input language, that it doesn't have to contain two.
Well, I guess it's also part of the legal process, saying you allow everybody to say what they want to, you know, it's the freedom of speech thing.
And I think the way we, I think the way we have it does say that, and, you know, some of the meetings that I've attended, nobody's, you know, put up, it's a person, you know, freedom of speech. I think the way it is written and the way it is now is good. I just think maybe the consideration here was, were brought it up, I don't know, was the five minutes or the three minutes? I think if we start going public input in two, three different places, it's just going to, you know, if I'm understanding what you're saying, but...
He's saying to leave it all together and specify differently.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, that we could just, so it says, during this portion of our meeting, we want to hear suggestions and what are your concerns. All you'd have to do is say it does not necessarily have to come to the end.
Would that work for you, Harvey? And one thing I'm picking up is, I don't see right now the advantage of saying the general comments have to come first, the agenda comments have to come second. I think based on two years of a year of public input, that if they mix based on who's raising their hand and who has to get to an appointment or whatever, that that works fine, too.
You know what, I will see to experience, because I don't have the experience to be able to say that. So, if it's working, fine, now, it's not broken, no fixing, but I was just going as to, when we went to the Open Meetings Act, that was one of the recommendations they had, so that you could ensure, you know, freedom of speech for everybody. But if it's working, back to that.
Any more discussion on the Open Meetings Act Resolution?
Okay.
As we join the Commissioners, also for the sake of our bond attorney, Bond Council's time, Luis is still on the line. I would like to skip to item CC, Consideration of Resolution R nineteen-ten, directing publication of notice of meeting and intent to adopt a bond ordinance in connection with Grant County, New Mexico, General Obligation Bonds Series Two Thousand and Nineteen. Luis?
Oh, sorry, I was on mute. I think you also have David on the line also, correct?
I am on the line, yes. Looking forward to seeing your votes on Thursday.
How are you guys doing?
Doing well. So, this is, this is a fairly simple resolution, it just authorizes us to publish notice in the local paper, giving notice of your intent to consider the ordinance that will authorize the issuance of your general obligation. We expect that that ordinance would be considered at next month's meeting, but as you know, counties are required to publish notice of an intent to adopt an ordinance at least two weeks prior to the meeting at which such ordinance would be considered. So, this takes care of that requirement, it's fairly simple. One thing we did want to address with you is, in two thousand and seventeen, there was an amendment to the Supplemental Public Securities Act, which gave public issuers of debt the option of delegating to some, one or more persons, the ability to make final determinations on certain items surrounding the bond, such as, you know, maturity date, interest rates, so on and so forth. We've seen public issuers use this authority, mixed reviews on my part, I think, but one possible scenario is you might elect to use that authority to delegate to perhaps the county manager or someone else of your choosing to, at the public sale, when the bonds are put to bid, to select, you know, the best bidder, make the final determination, which would give you the flexibility of not having to have a meeting that's timed to coincide with the pricing of the bonds, and at following the sale, the authorized person, perhaps the county manager here, if that were your preference, will then come back at a meeting following the sale and report back to you what those final terms are. So, we wanted to get your blessing and direction about which approach you wanted to take at this meeting, and then correspond our activities accordingly to that direction. David, did you want to add something on that?
Um, no, I don't think so. I think it's a good, you made a good point about your flexibility in regards to timing, and I don't know if DFA is with us on the line today, or whether she'll be there on Thursday to talk about that. So, you know, I think it's something where there are benefits and burdens on each side, and I think it's worth a little discussion with the Commission.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I ask you a question that answers you? Luis, you mentioned mixed results, and David, you mentioned some burdens associated with delegation. Could you explain those?
Uh, well, and this is just sort of my own opinion, but I do have another issuer who regularly issues debt, and the way that it's been structured, and because that issuer has monthly meetings every, what happened is they, they meet every month on the, actually the same day of year, the third Tuesday of the month, and so, for some reason there, the FA has also scheduled the sale date on those dates, so you don't really gain anything because they already have a meeting on the same sale date. So, I'm a little, I'm a little, I have mixed emotions about whether there's any advantage to doing it that way, but here, I'm not sure that that's the plan. I think that the sale would probably occur not coincident with a meeting, so then it makes more sense.
Yeah, I still didn't hear a mixed result. I heard a lot of not...
This is David, the negative is theoretical, really, and not so much in effect in a regular GEO, and that is that if the Commission sort of loses, you know, gives away its responsibility, delegates, in the word of statute, the staff, the Commission doesn't necessarily have, you know, the ability to question, you know, all of the details of the terms of the transaction.
I'm looking at all this.
In a more complicated transaction, you know, one when you have a different pledge, a more complicated credit, something that might put the Commission and the government at risk, they may feel uncomfortable in delegating that authority towards that person, but in my experience, in a GEO debt, where you, you know, clearly understand that the nature of the pledge is the property tax that the voters approve, and the delegation has nothing to do with how the proceeds of the bond will be used, that's a decision up to the governing body, and a decision that the voters make when they make the vote, allowing some flexibility in the timing of the sale, so that you could get the best interest rates, probably makes sense. So, I think as a practical matter here, the delegation, if used, does make sense, although it may turn out to be superfluous, but in a more complicated deal, or a deal where the governing body feels that they need to take the responsibility of the decision directly, then the delegation may not be so difficult.
All right, thank you.
So, my question is, just for clarification, you would put this in the ordinance that we're going to adopt later?
Yeah.
If you just wanted some indication of how we feel now?
So, you have two versions, either you're going to delegate authority or you're not going to delegate authority. And Lelay will be here on Thursday to speak more to her opinion as a financial advisor. She, she and I have numerous conversations. She prefers the delegated authority, because it gives her the flexibility to get us the best deal on interest rates. What the market's doing, as you all know, that fluctuates from day to day, and it's her job to get us the best possible rates that she can get, and that gives her the flexibility. If it's not delegated authority, then it has to come back to you on your meeting day, where you say, okay, yes, we like that, even though on that day, the market could have tanked, or interest rates could have, you know...
I have no opposition to delegation of authority, and I think that's a good idea. All right, thanks. Is there any more questions for Council? Do you have anything more for us?
Just, well, we have, like I say, I'm traveling back to, um, Arizona, so I arranged my week this week to stop by and see you folks, looking forward to this deal in the afternoon.
So, you, we have this on Thursday? Okay, great.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, good.
All right.
All right, thank you.
It's not for Council.
Okay, thanks. Thanks.
We had talked about doing these in halves, right, four and four. Is that, that's what Lelay is going to talk about?
So, we're going to present some different possible structures, but when I spoke with her again, what we were looking at, how we were looking at splitting up the issuances, so we have four million for roads, four million for facilities, and the way, so the staff and I have met for several, well, since before November, looking at how we would structure this if it was successful. The IRS, what it requires is for you, in year one, you must spend five percent. In year one, we would spend more than five percent, according to how we want to split these projects up. In three years, you would have to spend eighty-five percent, and the way that we were looking at splitting up these issuances, we would accomplish that anyway, so it would be who of us just to issue all of it upfront in one issuance. If you issue it in more than one increment, then you pay fees each time you issue those bonds. So, once we really started looking at how we were going to split that up, we were anticipating spending it in accordance to what IRS is going to require us to do. So, my recommendation, and after speaking with her, and I'll be meeting with her later today, it makes more sense to incur costs to issue at one time, when we're going to spend that down like we would have if we would have split that issuance up into two or three.
So, you're saying we'll spend regardless of what all of this stuff, we'll spend eighty-five percent of the eight million by two years?
In four years, five percent, and then you have three more years to...
Oh, I see.
So, in four years, yes.
It's four years total, okay.
I don't think we're going to have any problems spending it.
Yeah. No, I imagine we don't.
All right, Lelay, that's it.
Okay.
Okay.
No more questions, comments? So, bounce back, sorry. Um, item V, Consideration of Resolution... Item W, consideration of Resolution R 1902, appointment of Southwestern County Commission Alliance member. So this J P A ally was a member and an alternate to what we call otherwise known as WACO. Gabe was our representative and Billy was the alternate, so you will need to make those appointments to that committee.
We can decide no longer to send a representative, right?
You could, but the J P A says that we have a member and an alternate, so I'd like to look at the language or have Abby review the language in that J P A if that would change up the structure of that J P A if we're no longer participating.
Okay, so I have a couple of requests. That would be one. And the second would be that somebody explain the advantage to Grant County of continuing to participate.
I would, you know, to you, you participated as an alternate. You attend those meetings, per commissioner aside from never attending a meeting, so I can't speak until we're gently about that.
Yeah, so I mean, I think the advantage of attending is there's, it's basically a coalition of five counties, and when one of the counties has something that of interest that is of concern to them, they'll bring it before the other group, the rest of the group, and sometimes it's shared interests. One thing that was considered and talked about quite a bit was, prior to my being on there, was the closure of roads in the International Forest, and how extensive that would be. And then also discussion from the group about how some of those would, I think that's what, in my opinion, effectuated the Forest Service to be willing to open some of those roads back up on a case-by-case basis, which hasn't been a lot of them, but it was just having that discussion from a coalition of counties that bore more weight than a single county.
Is that Grant, Captain, Secora, or the other?
One of the counties, I'm the Sierra and Secora.
Sierra.
Along with Grant. So one more than you named.
But Sierra's the one you didn't name.
Yeah, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. I've heard five counties, so I was trying, but it's really six.
Six total.
Six counties, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Yeah, in the last two years that I've been on this board, I don't believe there's been, well, I do, there was one, exactly one instance where we, I think, had something come to us from the Alliance, and that was what I consider misguided lawsuit that we ended up not participating in.
Remind me about that?
Sure, that was about the travel management plane again, and we were asked to contribute 3,500, and to participate in the lawsuit, and we didn't.
Right.
So besides that, I don't remember anything coming from the Alliance. I also don't think it cost us much. I guess it costs some travel expenses, and that's about it. So it's not an enormous thing, but I haven't seen any value in it.
Yeah, I, as far as travel expenses, I don't anticipate any, well, if I was to be the representative, I don't anticipate any travel expenses.
And in my history since I've been here, the commissioner that's participated in this board has never submitted any request for a travel reimbursement to attend these meetings.
That's good to hear.
So, yeah, I would prefer that we, it would be my suggestion that we stay with the association and maybe a more regular report on the doings of the association will be in order. You've only heard one thing.
And maybe you and it gets a good opportunity to develop and see what's happening in the other counties.
And so would we pick, if we decided to stay with this, we'd pick an alternate?
One member and one alternate.
Okay, good.
Any other questions, discussion? Item W, consideration of Resolution R 1903, appointment of Grant County Water Commission member. So our member on this board was Gabe Ramos, and Alicia Edwards was the alternate. You can choose to leave Alicia as the alternate if she chooses to continue to serve in that capacity, but you do need to replace Gabe as the voting member of the Grant County Water Commission.
For what, so I'm very interested in that appointment. It's a commission I've gone to two times. I'm interested in their work.
I think, actually, yeah, two other commissioners have approached me with their interest in that. One of them stated that it's in his, he thought that it was in his district.
Well, I have to say that that was one of my, when I read that, that was part of my platform, you know, we're basically talking about the water.
Right.
And that was, I have a lot of interest in that.
I'm happy to give up my alternate spot. If you want, whatever.
It's great, but we're, actually, that's the two here. Is that what you're asking, Colin? Yes, I sure did.
Any other comments, questions, discussion? Item X, consideration of Resolution R 1905, appointment of Southwest Solid Waste Authority member. The J P A authorizes two members and two alternates for Grant County. Brett Caston was the voting member and myself, and the alternates are Ravi Via and Misha Ladish. So we definitely need to replace Brett, because we've had an alternate at the last month's meeting. I would like to continue serving in that capacity because it does affect our budget through our environmental social fees and tipping fees, and I am currently the vice chair of that board. So you have a lot to consider, actually, two members, two alternates.
Resha, who's sorry?
Ravi Via.
Oh, right.
Questions, comments?
I didn't hear anybody for George to that.
It's not very glamorous, top water. On the right side, Alex runs a very quick meeting, so you're usually out by regularly as 30 minutes, 15 usually, so if you want something quick and simple.
I would actually, I don't have a problem with that, but being on the applicable board, I just, I really need to give up the workforce board. Happy to trade that out.
So item W, consideration of Resolution R 1906, appointment of New Mexico cap entity member. This is actually a two-year appointment pursuant to the J P A. We need a member and an alternate. Gabe Ramos was our voting member, and Billy has served as the alternate.
I would like to be the member, it's the, the project is in my district, that doesn't mean that I'm entitled to it. I understand that. Yeah, I'd like to be on the cap, maybe.
I'd like to be the alternate.
Okay.
Next, item Z, consideration of Resolution R 1907, appointment to the New Mexico County Insurance Authority Pool Board. Brett Caston served as the alternate, the voting alternate on that board. That consists of two meetings a year. The multi-line pool meets during the legislative conference, and that legislative conference in South Bay. The waters comp board meets in June at the annual, in that conference. I currently serve as the voting member, and we need to replace the alternate, or unless you don't want me to serve as the voting member, you can remove me.
And can the appointment be someone who, an elected official who is not a county commissioner?
It can be anyone. It can be another staff. It can be a commissioner. It doesn't require that it be a county commissioner. It could be, it could be Raul, it could be the sheriff, it could be our H R person, it could be whoever you want to appoint that would have some sort of knowledge of insurance and work.
Do you have an opinion, besides you, who would be the person most able to fill that role? Because I don't think many of us have.
Is that in the interest of any of the commissioners?
I was just going to say, I know that in the scope of what Mr. Porter does right now, he deals with that.
You are good. You know, I.
I do, huh? Look, where you guys stay.
It's been a commissioner as long as I've been the voting member, so.
If we have a commissioner willing to do it, then I take it back on the question.
Next, item AA, consideration of Resolution R 1908, appointment to the elected officials' Board of Workforce Investment Act. Commissioner Edwards has expressed an interest to step away from that board. She can give you the details of how often and what that board does.
So the board meets quarterly, but two weeks. So I work full-time in addition to being a commissioner, and it requires travel. Two last cases, three of the four meetings. We've met Deming, I think this, the upcoming meeting, meeting and truth of consequences, it's very hard for me to make it to these meetings.
What do you do?
Right, I'm not really sure.
Is that because you have made it to one?
I've made it to one. And actually, it was, it was a great conversation. The meeting that I went to was really a great conversation. And it is, this, the elected officials' board is a requirement of the Workforce Investment Act, whatever the funding is to the Workforce Investment Act, and they talk about workforce development primarily. I learned some interesting things, but.
So we're talking about job development?
Well, I'm an entire person, so I'm, my.
That would be so nice.
Same thing, interest here, but whatever.
Well, do we need an alternate for this one?
We've always had, we've always appointed an alternate, just in case.
Geez, I think we've been.
I know, we didn't have an alternate.
We didn't have an alternate. We're following.
We did one wrong.
It's going for alternate, then, probably a Christmas alternate, maybe?
I don't know. Okay.
Okay.
Item BB, consideration of Resolution R 1909, authorizing the execution and delivery of a local government planning grant agreement by and between New Mexico Finance Authority and Grant County, any amount of $37,500, evidencing an obligation of the grant to utilize a grant amount of local match amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of an asset management plan. I'm going to stop right there for the sake of my voice.
Thank you.
And that gives you the gist of it. Make sure to go on and explain why it works in this order and.
Would you read that again?
Would you read the second half? No, no problem. No, basically, this is, this is the grant that we applied for, for the asset management plan. It's 75% of the cost, and we have paid the cost of the asset management plan upfront. So we need to execute these documents so that we can get our $37,500 back.
Wow. Did we, in fact, the plan came in at $50,000 even?
It came in just a little over, but the match that they will, the little matches up to $800. Once you put it on the N G R T, it's a little over.
Any questions? We've already done the next two. Item EE, consideration of Resolution R 1912, supporting the County and Tribal Health Council Act. There is legislation that's been introduced to support full funding of the health council. It says tribal because that's how the statute refers to it. And I know that Judy Alafin and Mary Alice Murphy both would like to speak to you on behalf of supporting that legislation. You want to?
You've been very patient.
I'm sitting too long, sorry. Chair and commissioners, thanks for this opportunity. Wow, I thought I had a lot on my to-do list. Briefly, I just want to give you a little bit of a quick history on the Grant County Community Health Council, real quick, and then I'll tell you where it currently is, and then I want to tell you what the state New Mexico Alliance for Health Councils is asking from each commission. So the history briefly is that in 1999, Grant County Community Health Council held their first meeting, so almost 20 years ago. It's been in existence here. It was first under the maternal child health council funding, so now they want to change it to the New Mexico Health Council and Tribal Health Council. So it's going to change the verbiage a little bit and get it more up to date. So in those 20 years, I don't know how much all of you are aware of the work that the health council did. One of the biggest successes has been Coria Caminos. There's been lots of forums, community forums, volunteer center. We sent our list of everything to Fertidet, so that should be in the proclamation. So where we are now, in September of 2018, we lost, well, we're out of funding, and Grant County was one of the last counties in New Mexico to have full funding for a full-time position. So we outlasted other counties by 10 years in some cases, and at least three or four in a few other cases. So we're out of money. It's currently parked in the Grant County area. Sharling's our fiscal agent, well, county is our fiscal agent. And so then there is a statewide organization called the New Mexico Alliance for Health Councils, and Chris DeBolt, who is a Grant County resident, sits on that board. So I attended a phone call meeting a couple of weeks ago in December, and they're asking every county that would like to see some funding restored to have a person to coordinate efforts and not duplicate efforts. That was one of the key things. So it's a neutral place for the community to come and voice opinions. And so we were asking for a proclamation from each county commission, and then the health council will write a letter. And we're still meeting, Mary Alice and I are on the steering committee, and we're still meeting as needed, so we'll do that by Thursday. So that's what we're looking for you to be, to ask for that. Thank you.
So one thing that I think, yeah, Judy didn't mention that is really important, that the health council does is the community assessment. And without that community assessment piece, you know, every organization in Grant County that writes grants relies on current assessments.
And we just did one. We finished one, but we haven't had a person to compile all of that information and disseminate it or hash community forums. So yes, that is an important.
Millions of dollars with the grants riding on that current assessment data.
And it's valid because it's from a neutral source that's collected from a disinterested party. So there's a lot of things the health council could do. One of the discussions we had today about letting people know about the tax deal that Rolles talked about and Y'all talked about, that would be a perfect educational community forum that the health council could do. So we're needing someone to coordinate that. And it's looking like there's two House bills up, and they've been presented by a representative from, this is from San Miguel County. So it's Liz Thompson. So there's House Bill 137 and House Bill 67. I looked both of those up on Friday, and they are, they've been presented, but they're in the Health and Human Services area right now, so we'll be following those. And Lieutenant Governor Howard Morales has been very supportive, and he is doing his part to see what kind of funding we can get in the governor's budget as well. So there's a couple of fronts out there, so, and Alicia was right, the community assessment is one of the huge things that we do. All of the grants, most of the grants that come in here from all areas use some of that data, and they cite that data.
And then current the funding we get in front of us a date, there's several different objectives that they, or deliverables that they want you to complete. They give us about $4,300 to complete those objectives, one of them being this assessment, which takes a lot of time, either a contractor or a full-time person. Grant County's been very fortunate to have a model health council for the entire state, but due to unforeseen circumstances at the hospital, when it moved out of that, they were able to survive for a few years on some leftover funds there. But it's a little hard to operate on less than $5,000 a year to complete the work that the health councils are tasked with doing. So I would definitely urge the commission's support of this because the health councils play a very important role in the communities.
Thanks. Great.
Mr. Chair, of course, we, our fight brings up under the New Mexico counties. I also sit on the Native American Policy Committee, and if any, any help or any presentation that you would like to do in our Native American Policy Committee, I actually represent the south part of the state of New Mexico, so I would just like to bring that to the board itself. Thanks.
Thanks. Questions for Judy? Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Judy. Item FF, consideration of resolution R 1913, supporting reform of the low-income property tax rebate. Ironic that this is on the same agenda as we're considering the ordinance. So, legislation has been introduced that would reform some language in the statutes. The statute currently says that counties shall consider, or consider an ordinance every odd number of years. This would change the language that said counties may consider this, so it's not forcing you to do this. There are several counties that this is an oversight, they forget every two years, you don't put it on your calendar, and it, it slips the costs, and of course, as we discussed earlier, the unknown financial impact of this. So, I believe this is Senate Bill 116, introduced by Senator Woods, and what all it does is, it cleans up a little, few other minor language changes, but the, the critical part is changing that from "you shall do this" to "you may do this." Questions, comments?
No.
Item DG, consideration of resolution R 1914, a resolution to apply for funding from the Colonial's Board for the Tyrone ADA Compliance Project. Misha, you wanna explain what the Tyrone project consists of?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So, the Tyrone ADA Compliance Project is one that Colonial's funded the design, and it's for sidewalks throughout the Tyrone community. They are ADA compliant at, at the moment. So, Colonial's funded that design. The board already approved the resolution to the match for the application, which I was under the impression that was gonna be enough for the application, but the Colonial's Board came back to me and said, no, they wanted a specific resolution allowing me to apply for the Colonial's Board. The Colonial's Board is very important, Colonial's funding is very important to us in, in this part of the world, and it has funded quite a few projects. Currently, we have the Roseville Road project that was funded last year, that's one point six million. So, I just want to comply with what they need and make sure our application is accepted and not kicked out for something this simple. Okay, any questions?
In the future, can you combine approval for application with approval for the match?
Yes.
Do they allow that?
Yes, and, uh, last year I did it the way that I did this year, but, you know, people change, so then their perception changes.
A lawyer got involved.
Thank you. Thanks.
Colonial's is under the targets, I see. We'll take it. Item HA, consideration of resolution R 1915, a resolution of Grant County ratifying a certain agreement between Grant County and the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, dated January 24, 2019, authorizing the executive saying by the proper official of Grant County, that's their title, not mine. What this does is, it's a resolution that approves us, an agreement being a member of the Cog, paying dues, and appointing our voting representative as well as two alternates. So, they require participating entities to approve this resolution, which does all those things. Currently, our voting member is Commissioner Billings. Misha is the alternate. We did not name a second alternate, so we need to name a voting member and then two alternates. There is no longer any requirement that it be an elected official. A few years back, Cogs did require that language, that it had to be an elected official. That's no longer the case. I think Misha has expressed an interest in becoming the voting member. He's been attending our voting and most of the meetings, and a lot of the work they do directly pertains to work that he's doing within his department. So, with that, you would be approving agreement, being a participating entity, as well as naming your members and alternates.
Yeah, so I attended two or three of those meetings, and I know this is right way that Misha should have been not the alternate, but the designate. But I did learn a lot by attending the Cogs meetings. Priscilla Lucero plays a vital function in this region, and, and so, I guess what I'm saying that is, if you get a chance to attend one of those meetings, whether they're Commissioners or any of you, you can learn a lot about funding and, and what Misha's doing too by going to those. And I would suggest that we should, we can follow the advice of the manager, and we should be the representative for a cause.
So, do you wanna be an alternate?
Uh, could we be an alternate?
Yeah, just tell him I'm gonna be one.
I, if one of the new Commissioners has time, I think it'd be good experience.
I, I wanna attend the meeting.
I have a wording question, just 'cause I can't figure this out. Authorizing the executive of the same, is that supposed to say the exec, execution of the same? Oh, good. I'd like to know, I could not figure out what we're asking of the executive to do.
It should be execution of the same.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, the next item is you will convene as a Grant County Healthcare Plans Board. You have claims in the amounts of five thousand three hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-eight cents, three claims to Hila Regional Medical Center in the amount of four thousand six hundred eighty dollars and three cents, and one claim to Hila Regional Medical Center Ambulance Service in the amount of six hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Questions?
Just have a comment, just for the new Commissioners, this is, maybe you know more than I think, but if you haven't been following this, this is a pretty low figure. So, it's nice to see.
I was really pleased to see this. I'm going to contribute some of this to our new medical group that we have at the Detention Center for the first time in, well, since I've been here. They're fully stocked. We have twenty-four seven medical coverage, we have an R in there, twenty-four hours a day, and they are reducing the, and you can chime in here if I'm talking out of turn, like, reducing the calls for EMS, not just panicking and sending them to the ER, they're actually doing what we pay them to do. So, I've been very pleased with, um, their efforts in reducing those trips to the, to the hospital. So, they've done a really good job there.
This is viral, huh?
Fatal, geez, viral, huh? Yeah, you just approved two of the November Battle Force strategies or something like that. So, I've been very pleased with them thus far.
Great, thanks.
And that concludes the, the other agenda.
Thanks. So, we'll stand for, oh, sorry, go back to the other agenda. County reports, Mr. Corrie.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Decker, this is my report, but it's number fourteen, two thousand nineteen, January seventeen, two thousand nineteen. What I'd like to do is just go down to item number five, recognition program. I'd like to publicly recognize both of my officers, Philip Bison and James Castillo, newly hired officers, and they've been doing extremely well, and for that reason, we selected them as employees of the month for December. I just wanted to publicly recognize them. And also, I did provide for you the detention graphs, and what I tried to do is kinda give you a snapshot of the month of December two thousand eighteen, and then for the entire year, from January first, two thousand eighteen, to December thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. The only comment that I have about the graph is, if you look on October, when you start seeing, um, reduce in our population, in our males and females, for whatever reason, that started to drop there.
Just a minute till we all get on the page.
I beg your pardon?
You wait just a second.
Oh, oh, sorry, okay.
Okay, we're done.
Philip Bison. Okay, good to go. Okay, that's good, all right. I would just, I would just make some comments on the, on the graphs that I provided for you, and if you can take notice, which I did, in October, we started seeing a drop in the males and females in the overall population. And usually, we have, traditionally, we usually had a spike in, in the, in our population, and usually during the holiday season, we usually see an increase, for whatever reason we did, we saw the decrease, and it's still continuing as of, uh, this morning, the head count was at sixty-five, sixty-six. So, we're still continuing to see somewhat of a drop in our population, in our males and females. Uh, one thing that, when I attended the Tucasa Advisory Board Meeting, I noticed that, they, Tucasa came on in, in October, and, you know, the numbers that Dan provided for you today is that five hundred and seventy-nine service encounters. At the meeting, when I saw the spike in, the drop in our population of males and females, I asked Dr. Bowen if he could check for me and see if, um, if, 'cause we've been using Carolinks a lot, and they've been sending some of the inmates over there to Tucasa, and I was just, I was asking him to see if they could check for me, to see if, uh, if there were any of the number of inmates that were released from the Detention Center were going to Tucasa, 'cause I wanted to see if there was maybe some kind of a correlation. They were not able to provide me with any of the names because of some HIPAA regulations and the release of medical information. So, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna provide them with our prisoner in custody list, and what Dr. Bowen said he'd do is he would look at those names and then just provide me with numbers to see if, how many of those names correlate with our prisoner in custody list, to see how many are actually going to Tucasa, 'cause I was kinda curious to see if, if that was one of the reasons that we're having a reduced population, and hopefully it'll start, if it is, it'll start reducing our recidivism. But anyway, I'll be looking at that, and I'll be seeing what kind of numbers I can get and see if that's, I'm, I'm sure is gonna help, I just, I'm not quite sure right now what kind of an impact it's gonna make, but I just wanted to make those comments on my report.
Oh, this one, really, now, it's been dropping since June, for sure, really, since maybe April.
Yeah. It, it runs pretty consistent, Mr. Chairman, and then if you look, if you look in the yearly, you'll see that right about October, September started to go down, and then October, November, December, uh, kinda went down, and in both males and females. And so, I was just kinda curious as what, um, what was causing that drop, 'cause normally, again, like I said, normally, we usually during the holiday, we usually see that, an increase in, in the NAC we have at the facility. So, I hope it continues, and I hope that we're doing some good as far as Tucasa, and some of the behavioral health and the resources that we're providing at the Detention Center are helping.
Well, let's hope that's it, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for providing this information or ask for the question.
You're welcome.
Questions?
One thing we heard about when we were in San Jose last week was New Mexico's Just Health Program. And this sounds like a, a program that we could, we could use, we weren't listed as, as users yet, or as contractors with it. Is that something you're familiar with?
Um, I'm not familiar with, with that program.
I'm hoping they'll reach out to you. They said, they said they would, they're required to actually, reach out to all the counties. And it's a program that helps detainees get connected with medical services after, after released.
The aftercare.
Exactly.
Yes, sir. And Commissioner Brown, Mr. Chairman, I think what, with our stepping up program, that's also another one of the components of our stepping up program, which we are really working hard at, and right now, we're trying to bring all the resources together. One of the, one of my goals that I'd like to see of the stepping up program is to initiate our crisis intervention team, and it kinda goes right along with that, where they will respond, and instead of going to incarceration, we'll get them to a medical facility. So, I'm hoping that, it seems to, it seems to, all the resource providers are, seem to be supporting that kind of, that kind of, of intervention.
So, just to follow along on that, um, sorry, go ahead. I'm just gonna let you know that I'm gonna give you a brief report on stepping up back in February meeting, just a synopsis of what we're doing, what we've accomplished, and where we're gonna step up, so to educate you guys as to the progress we've made, and the support we're just to us stepping up all that, and why we go this quickly, because we need our county, so we saw that, do you have any?
I agree.
So, just to follow up on the Just Health page, my impression of Just Health is it's something that would be complementary to stepping up, but it's just one of the tools that you could have in that stepping up. And the person who is in charge of that outreach, name escapes me at the moment, but she has my card with your phone number on it to contact you, and one of the challenges that they have had around the state is the software that they use isn't compatible with the software in every detention center, and she thought that there had been contact with Grant County, and that that was actually the issue, is that their system and, and our system can't talk to each other. And that's a key part of Just Health, is you've gotta be able to have that software connection, and one of the things that they're trying to do is figure out how to change that so that that is not the barrier for counties to be able to use that system. So, there's some legislative work happening on that, if you're sure.
I'm not sure. There was a program very similar to that, I don't recall what they named it, it was a pilot, pilot program, do you remember that, Mike? That they started with just a few counties, and it's very similar to what you've just described, but, um, the next step, and they, and they were supposed to do an outreach to all counties once they completed that pilot project. So, we're also looking at some new software, and so hopefully that won't be a barrier in the future.
Okay, thanks. Just a little more.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pretty much as business usual down there at the Road Department, we're working on resident complaints. As you can imagine, the blade operators are still awful busy after the weather we've had this, this winter. We are trying to patch when we get around sixty degree weather, but we're trying to get at least one day a week on patching on the nation. That's about it.
Okay, next question, for Mr. Warren.
We have three hours to back.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Villa.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and also the board. We'll quick, start with the fire departments going into twenty nineteen, working with the state forestry in Socorro, which is our overseas, the wildland for us, working with them, put on classes for all the VFDs and, and keeping their certifications as we get into the new fire season. Also, this is the time we, we kinda work with the feds, but obviously, they're not working, so that's kinda been a struggle right now, even at the, because as you know, we have the flight base over there, we provide them with fuel and trying to get with them early this year, and making sure that, that everything's in place, but it's gonna be a, it might be a crunch if they don't get to work here pretty soon. We did have a fire in Ellis Mesa, a structured fire, it was a struggle, I'll be honest, I wanna thank, P A was the lead fire department on that, with Whiskey Creek and Tyrone assisting them. The road was bad, but obviously, everybody knows it is a dirt road, and you're gonna have those issues, especially in the type of weather we had over the last two to three weeks. So, I do wanna thank all of them for doing that. We had a small little grass fire yesterday, but was put out pretty quickly by Whiskey Creek, and so I'm gonna thank them for that. Cora Caminos got two brand-new buses in, one will go to Luna County, one will be here, they're both equipped with wheelchair ramps, so we'll be able to get those up and running as soon as we get them detailed and on the road. Maybe this department's working really hard, we just onboarded our electrician, so that's gonna help us save some money for run and help us get some of these issues with some of the code violations that we've had, not big code violations, but things that have to be done, and hopefully when we get on those as quickly as we can. I know that Jason's working on the Defense, the Detention Center, trying to get some quotes for that as we look forward for that. I think that's all I have, unless you have any impressions for me right now.
Question? Well, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Lara?
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. So, Whiskey Creek, volunteer fire department, we started the construction on the sewerline extension. While I was gone last week, when I, when I came back, I had a message from a landowner out there that, that they had a complaint on the contractor parking on their property. By the time I called her back, it was already handled, she had already spoken with the contractor and told his employees not to do that. She did ask me if we were gonna do any reseeding, and I just told her that we have the next step is the actual reconstruction of the road, so I did not, and she got very excited when she heard that we were gonna reconstruct the road, so. A little longer, the federal lands access program, I'll just let you know the application has been submitted. Application's in. For the airport, we have the, RFP is out for architectural services on the terminal building. Rebecca spoke about the grant, the federal FAA grant, and I do want to make you guys all aware that that does have some tight timelines. We've had two architects that have spoken with us about, you know, putting something in, and they're both aware that if they are awarded, that there's a tight timeline. I bring that up because there could be some meeting requirements that we throw on you so that we can get that done. But as Rebecca said, there's a lot of federal and state money that helps us out on an over $600,000 bill, that our portion may be $32,000. So I just want to make you aware that that's a possibility. Bandonee and Cottage San, we have started some engineering work on that during the monstries. We had some, some damages that went on in there, so hopefully, the engineering that has been started will help us to make some changes, so we don't have that flooding, that damage to the road, putting a lot less effort in Earl's department, hopefully. The North Hurley Design 100% Plan Set is just about done. Our contractor let me know last week that they anticipate having those final designs in two weeks, so that's a project that we'll be looking at probably next year, seeing if we can apply for some more funding to get that completed. The new commissioners may or may not know, but that one was started currently coming on. We've already done, we have about a 75% plan set, and we did partial construction. It's a lot of drainage and roadway for North Hurley Road, so just to keep up to speed on that. And then Hachita Volunteer Fire Department Construction, the Geotech Soils Report is complete. Facility build made their site visit last week, and we're anticipating seeing some final architectural plans and cost estimates on that. Again, that one is one that will be fully funded by the Fire Department, so we don't anticipate making any loans for that. And that's my report.
Any questions? Questions?
I saw Randy's expenditure report, the paper for the right-of-way, the flat, do you have that?
I do, I'd like to see it.
I would love to.
Okay.
I have a question about the Federal Aviation Administration grant that you mentioned. Is that one and the same as the funds that we were talking about previously, if we could keep our in plane, in plane months up over 10,000, about 10,000 per year?
Okay.
So we're not talking about it too big?
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? Is that everyone from the county? Yeah. Go ahead. Oh, yeah, you, I thought you.
It's really quick. I just wanted to thank Steve Almatas and Commissioner Brown for accepting the RAP award for, on behalf of the county.
No, we're the RAP.
Risk Awareness Program Award, and it's, it's important as we talk about safety and moving our safety program forward, is we received an award for completion of year two of this program, and a 31% reduction in our multi-line claims, which is a third of our claims we've reduced, simply by creating the awareness of, or we're going to attribute to that anyways, is more training. So I thought that was very good, because last year, we looked at, I think we had a 10% reduction. But 31% is very good, so hats off to all county employees for, for helping us to tune that on.
Wow, great. Commissioner reports, anyone for today? Okay. Okay, there's nothing further. Motion to adjourn.
So.
Okay.
Well, we're great.
Did we forget? All elected reports will be on Thursday, elected officials.